In the name of the one who's the source of our strength and the strength of our life, we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Smiley hasn't made it to the chambers yet, but Reverend Alexander, we will have a token of our appreciation for your opening hour meeting up with prayer this morning, or this afternoon, so thank you, sir. Yeah, it's been withdrawn. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilmembers Canale, Carlisle, Collette, Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson, Logan, Morgan, Robinson, Vice Chairman Smiley, Swearengen Washington, Warren, Chairman Jones.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Councilman Carlisle is here as well. Councilman Carlisle, have you read the minutes for our February 21st meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the minutes. I've found them to be ordered and moved for their adoption.
Okay, yes, electronically, please. Okay, our minutes have been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilman Canale. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Smiley, yes, for the minutes. Chairman Jones, yes. Easter Thomas, for the minutes. Yes, thank you.
That item passes. Welcome to the March 7th regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. Comment cards are available for members of the public wishing to be heard on a specific item. Our Sergeant at Arms has agendas available up front. Please be mindful that all cards must be completed in their entirety, including the item number you wish to speak on. Cards that do not include an item number or are left blank will be held until the end of the meeting for the general comment section. All those wishing to speak on an item must turn in their comment cards to the Sergeant at Arms before the item is called. As Chair, we'll only recognize citizens that properly registered to speak by submitting a completed comment card to the Sergeant at Arms. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The Chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or who does not adhere to council rules. On the left-hand side of the chamber, there's a monitor that will be displaying YouTube livestream of our media, of our meeting with closed captioning. Please be advised that there is a 30 to 40-second delay, but is available for those members of the public in need of that assistance. Madam Comptroller, item number 22 has been held until our April 25th meeting. Item number 23 has been held for two weeks. Items number one and seven have been withdrawn. And members of the public, if you are here to speak on items 22 or 23, they will not be heard this evening. Items one and seven are no longer up for consideration and have been withdrawn. Councilwoman Easter Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I would like to hold item number 17 for two weeks.
So colleagues, we will be holding item number 17.
With that objection, for two weeks.
Number 17. So if there's no objection, we will be holding item number 17 until our next meeting. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number 34?
Item number 34 is a resolution honoring Animal Control Officer Lawrence Higginbottom on being named Animal Control Officer of the Year for 2022.
Colleagues, whereas on occasion the Memphis City Council has seen fit to honor citizens who have served this community, and Animal Control Officer Lawrence Higginbottom is one such citizen whose contributions to the city of Memphis are certainly worthy of recognition. And whereas Officer Lawrence Higginbottom is a proud graduate of Memphis's own Craigmont High School, while there he was known as a standout football player upon graduation, Officer Higginbottom continued to build his life here in the city of Memphis. And whereas Officer Lawrence Higginbottom innate passion for animals led him to pursue a career in Memphis Animal Service in 2017, he became an Animal Control Officer in 2019. Since beginning his career with Memphis Animal Service, Officer Higginbottom has developed a reputation amongst his colleagues as being a rare individual who is gifted in working with other people and animals. Officer Higginbottom has become well-known and admired for his positive attitude and kindness. And whereas Officer Lawrence Higginbottom has dedicated his time and service to the city of Memphis by lending his love for animals and his expertise to help ensure the safety and well-being of both citizens and its vast animal population. Whereas Officer Lawrence Higginbottom's work has not gone unnoticed. As a result of his hard work and service, Officer Higginbottom has received the highest national recognition in his field. He was named the Animal Control Officer of the Year for 2022 by the National Animal Care and Control Association, NACA. Based on Officer Higginbottom's exceptional performance and the high praise he receives from others who work in Memphis Animal Service, it is unquestionable that this honor was well-deserved. And whereas outside of his role as an Animal Control Officer and the contributions he has made to the city of Memphis as an employee and to his community, Officer Lawrence Higginbottom is also a beloved father to six children and a proud owner of three dogs. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council honors Officer Lawrence Higginbottom for his dedicated service and contribution to the city of Memphis, and we congratulate him on his national recognition as Animal Control Officer of the Year, given by my hand and under the seal of the great city of Memphis on the 7th day of March. Mr. Lawrence Higginbottom, congratulations, sir.
And I so move.
Thank you for moving that item. Do I have a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Congratulations.
Well, first of all, I want to thank, um, second of all, my mom, she just raised me to be, you know, a kind person regardless of what I'm going through or whatnot. So I just try to extend the love through friends, you know, in my city as long. So it kind of helped me and navigated me through the job. It's kind of second nature, that's all. I don't really, the job is so fun, it's just, you know, I don't even look at it as a job, to be honest. But, uh, I don't really have too much to say, honestly. I can't even lie to you. I ain't preparing no speech or nothing, but I love what I do and I continue doing.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. You ready? Will you please call item number two on our agenda?
Item number two is a resolution approving the Pure Academy Plan Development at the subject property located at 4815, 4825, and 4847 Amy Road and 748 Wilson Road. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 22-06.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. This item was brought before the Planning and Zoning Committee, and it received a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Canale. Is there anyone who's speaking on this item?
I see the applicants out here, they may want to say something because they're doing a fantastic job. Good seeing y'all again. And they just may want to say thank you.
Yes, John Galwin, on behalf of Pure Youth Athletics, just want to quickly introduce my wife, Tammy Galwin, who has been behind the proposal that is being approved here tonight. And then to my left over here, we've got Billy Aldens, who's Global Vice President for Medtronics, who's our Chairman of the Board of Directors of Pure. And then we have two very fine young men. One, Alpha Diallo, who is a current Pure student, who is on his way to Rhodes College, who'll be playing football next year. And then we have recent Pure graduate, Tevin Carter, who plays quarterback for the University of Memphis Tigers. This body has been hugely supportive of Pure since we have all been involved in it, and we just want to express our appreciation to all of you, to our council member, Councilmember Ford, who has helped us so much. We appreciate all of you very much. And Councilmember Johnson, thank you for your kind remarks.
Thank you. So seeing no other colleagues in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, colleagues, the screens are prepared for your vote.
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
Thank you. That item passes. Councilman Collette, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that close enough? Sorry. Mr. Chairman, if there's no objection, I'd like to bring S U P 22-30 off the table, also known as the Dream Hotel Project. Would both parties come to the front real quick?
Okay, if there's no objection, that item has been placed, has been removed from the table.
Without objection.
Okay, without objection. It has been, well, Madam Comptroller? Well, I'll just do a roll call. All those in favor of removing this item off the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item is off the table. Councilman Collette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through a lot of hard work, S U P 22-30, we do have, I think it's like 14 amendments, friendly, that both sides have already agreed on. If we can go ahead and get a quick presentation, just remind everybody what we're working
Brett Davis, Division of Planning and Development. Good afternoon, everyone. This is case S U P 22-30. It's a special use permit request for a hotel in the central business district, which requires council approval for this use. Some basic information about who's applied, area, zoning district. And I've got some elevations proposed, some conceptual elevations. We are recommending approval, subject to these seven conditions, and I understand that Councilman Collette might have additional conditions to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no questions of staff at this point. Colleagues, I'll read the agreed conditions, and I'll read them rather quickly, but stop me if you want more detail. One, a minimum transparency of 20% as measured from floor to floor shall be provided on new upper floors along all facades adjacent to the right-of-way. Two, blank lengths of wall exceeding 30 feet are prohibited on all new upper floors along the facades adjacent to the right-of-way. Three, each new upper floor shall have a floor-to-floor height of at least nine feet. Four, all sidewalks adjacent to the site shall be repaired, replaced as needed. Streets gaping and passenger loading facilities may be required, subject to administrative approval. Five, service areas and mechanical equipment shall be screened from the public view, subject to administrative approval. Six, the existing structures' northern and western facades shall be substantially incorporated into the architectural design, subject to administrative approval. Seven, a final plan set shall be submitted for administrative approval prior to permitting. Eight, the loft dumpster on the north side of November 6th Street shall always be accessible. Nine, no construction traffic will be permitted through the Peabody Place Office Tower Garage at 110 Peabody Place. Ten, a loading dock and service area which will adequately serve all the loading and service functions of the proposed Dream Hotel shall be provided within the property line of the subject site and enclosed inside the building. Except for the construction term, no delivery trucks or other vehicles shall park for any reason on November 6th Street, Gayoso Avenue, or Main Street at any time of the day or night, other than for active loading or unloading activities. During the construction term, there shall be no obstruction that inhibits the flow of traffic on Gayoso, Main Street, or the temporary bypass built for November 6th. Eleven, an area of the storage of waste, trash, and other refuse which will adequately serve all the waste disposable functions of the Dream Hotel Project shall be provided within the property line of the subject site and enclosed inside the building. Except for construction term, no waste containers shall be placed in the streets or sidewalks surrounding the subject site at any time, other than temporarily during active collection operations. During the construction term, there shall be no obstruction that inhibits the flow of traffic on Gayoso, Main Street, or the temporary bypass built for November 6th Street. Twelve, at any time on November 6th Street, south of Gayoso, is substantially closed to public vehicular and/or truck traffic. A continuous available and open alternate traffic route to Second Street, including a new or expanded curb cut on Gayoso at a minimum of 19 feet in width, will be provided, and the city engineer and other permitting authorities are hereby directed to issue the required permits. I'm almost done, I promise. Thirteen, during the term of construction, if a tenant of the building or development, commonly called Barbaro, that's the property just north of Jolly, located between South Main and November 6th on the west and the east, and between Gayoso and Barbaro Alley on the south and the north, shall need to completely block Gayoso Avenue to load or offload. This shall be permitted for up to three hours per occurrence, and requires the mover to install temporary signage completely blocking Gayoso. Sign shall be located on the east side of the intersection of Gayoso and South Main, and installed before work commences and removed immediately after work is complete. Sign shall conform the city of Memphis Traffic Engineering requirements for road closure. Road closure shall not occur more than one time per day. Fourteen, and last, a building permit to commence construction of the hotel shall be obtained no later than January 1st, 2024, and a certificate of occupancy for the hotel shall be obtained no later than January 1st, 2026, or this special use permit shall expire and terminate. These are the friendly conditions that I think both sides will say that they admit to. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Dedrick, would you identify yourself representing Dream Hotel?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. My name's Dedrick Britnam. My address is 3385 Airways Boulevard, Suite 229, Memphis Zip Code 38116. I'm here representing the Dream Hotel Group, headed up by Mr. Tom Infretto.
All right, thank you very much. Tom, would you introduce yourself real quick?
Tom Infretto.
Just name and address.
In Memphis, 390 South Main Street, Memphis, Tennessee, 3123.
Thank you very much. Nathan, would you guys step forward, give me a name and address real quick, since you represent Mr. Bells? Are y'all in agreement with the conditions?
Nathan Biggs, Birch Porter &amp; Johnson, 130 North Court, here on behalf of Bells Enterprises.
Ron Bells, 100 Peabody Place, 6362, Blue Arrow.
And you guys are in agreement with these 14 conditions?
We are, and we'd like to thank you for your efforts to mediate, help us get to this point.
It was several hundred hours, and every word was made sure to be perfect.
Mr. Chairman, and councilmembers, yes, we agree. And special thanks to Councilmember Collette for his efforts in the mediation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, these are the friendly amendments that everyone accepts, and I so move as amended.
Okay, has been moved by Councilman Collette electronically, and seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Seeing no council members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, this is item number 37, so will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Better keep a word. Never know.
That is the correct answer.
Debbie, you want to vote?
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item three?
Item number three is an ordinance amending, ordinance number 5367 of the Code of Ordinances City of Memphis, Tennessee, adopted on August 10th, 2010, as amended, known as the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, to authorize a zoning use district reclassification for land located at 4225 Getwell Road by taking the land out of the residential single-family use district and including it in the employment use district. Up for third and final reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is Z 22-12. The ordinance number is 5847.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson.
Chair, the Planning and Zoning Committee met, discussed this item, and it received a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Okay, if you would do so electronically, please. Okay, has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no council members in the queue to speak on this item, the screens are prepared for the vote. Councilmembers, please cast your votes.
Chair, we have not had a presentation. That's why I think he was here.
Okay.
I think they asked for another somebody.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. So before you vote, let's have a presentation on this item. Yes.
Jordan McKenzie, Staff, DPD. This is just a 0.25, rezoning of 0.25 acres from RU 8 to EMP Employment District. It's on 4225 Getwell Road, just location in vicinity. It's a very small sliver of the northern portion of the lot. This is the land use and zoning, just some site photos, review purposes, just a site plan. Nothing is being, uses are not being expanded or anything at all, just trying to clean up the split zoning on the parcel. Staff recommends proof.
Great. So seeing no council members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please re-prepare the screens for the vote?
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item four?
Item number four is a joint ordinance amending the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code as adopted by the city of Memphis, August 10th, 2010, and by Shelby County on August 9th, 2010, as amended, to revise and enhance the joint zoning and subdivision regulations as recommended by the Memphis and Shelby County Division of Planning and Development and the Land Use Control Board. This is up for third and final reading. The ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. It was held from February 7th. Case number is ZTA 22-01CC. The ordinance number is 5844.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I think we need to move it to four on the screen. I can't move it.
Okay, yeah.
This particular item was...
Number four, yes.
Okay, this item was held, and discussed in planning and zoning, and it was approved. But before I want to move it, there are some amendments that have to be made to this particular item due to a lot of community communication that we had since the last meeting. So I move it as amended.
As amended, okay. So if you would introduce yourself, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Brett Raxdale with the Division of Planning and Development, and I would just like to say that it's by chance and circumstance or timing that I'm here instead of Director Zina to carry this across the finish line, and he is on a well-deserved vacation. But I want to thank Robert Gordon for really working with his constituents, who are varying degrees and varying opinions, and he and Director Zina really worked hard, and so I'm glad to be here to announce that. But I do give a lot of credit to Director Zina and Mr. Gordon. So there were two amendments that the last meeting, there was one issue that was really regarding townhouses in the RU 1 zoning district, and so we came to a resolution with those. Originally, we were recommending townhouses by right on RU 1 on Artiroles and Collector Streets on the corner, and by special use permit on other streets. We came to an agreement to remove the recommendation to allow special use permit approval for other streets and just remove that completely, so we agreed to have RU 1 allow townhouses by right on Artiroles and Collectors. So that was the main issue. And then just another little cleanup thing that we talked with them about, there was some concern about, one subsection 3.3.1B, which deals with private drives, and so we are adding a short sentence in there. So right now it reads, "An alley may not constitute frontage," and so we're just adding "or rear private drive" to that. So the new language will read, "An alley or rear private drive may not constitute frontage." And those are the two changes that we have that have not been approved yet.
Okay, we have questions from Councilwoman Logan. Councilwoman Logan.
Thanks, Chair. I just needed, I didn't hear what you said about the "by right" part. What was changed from our last meeting?
We just removed the, what we were requesting to allow townhouses in the interior of RU 1 streets by special use permit, so we agreed to remove that request. And so we had all agreed to allow townhouses by right on Artiroles and Collectors, and so that's what we ended up with. So the new language would be that townhouses will be allowed by right in RU 1, but only at the corner where we have Artirole and Collector Streets that meet.
Okay. Okay. Well, I know we talked about, we asked, there was a question about what was considered a major, did you all resolve that as well?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll get back to you.
Okay. Seeing no other council members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare this item for the vote?
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call our consent agenda?
Thank you. That will take us to item number five, which is up for second reading. Ordinance number 5856 is sponsored by the Memphis City Council. Item number six is also up for second reading. Ordinance number 5857 is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas and Chairman Jones. On our add-ons, we have two ordinances. Item number 31, up for first reading, an ordinance to provide for police reform, codify policies and procedures for Memphis police officers relating to traffic stops, use of force... use of force, use of body cameras, anti-profiling rules, personal conduct of officers, and establishing reporting requirements by the Memphis Police Department for officer misconduct and interactions with citizens. Up for first reading, ordinance number five-eight-five-eight is sponsored by Councilman Carlisle. Item number thirty-two is a joint resolution, excuse me, I am on item number thirty-six, is an ordinance to amend the city council meeting dates for 2023. Up for first reading, ordinance number five-eight-five-nine is sponsored by Councilman Carlisle. And that concludes our consent agenda items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We have one card to speak on a consent agenda item, item number thirty-one, and that card is from Beth Hoffberg. Beth Hoffberg, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have the engineering items. I'd like to addend them to this consent agenda as well.
Okay. One second, please, Ms. Hoffberg.
Are you sure I'm the only thirty-one, though? I know other people have submitted for thirty-one.
I have a card here for item number thirty-one that's on the consent agenda. But before you speak, Madam Comptroller, you can...
On the add-on agenda?
Give me one second, Ms. Hoffberg. You can proceed. No, yeah, Ms. Knight.
For the record, we also have item number eight up for second reading. An ordinance sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development is case number twenty-three-dash-zero-one, ordinance number five-eight-five-five. And we have engineering items that needed to be added to this read. Item number nine is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one to CR five-three-nine-five Pilot Cartlock Fueling Station, and there is a request for same night minutes. And item number ten is a resolution accepting public improvements for thirty-nine sixty-five old Getwell Road mechanical system drainage and authorizes release of bond. There is a request for same night minutes, and that contract number is CR dash five-four-ten. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our agenda items now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Young, do we have any more cards for item number thirty-one? Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Hoffberg, you have two minutes to speak.
Yes, okay. Beth Hoffberg, seven-one-seven South Riverside Drive, I'm in three-eight-one-zero-three. Thank you. I think it's unfortunate that we're talking about number thirty-one prior to talking about ordinances sixteen through twenty-one. And I'm also frustrated that we're not going to be talking about ordinance seventeen, since apparently that got held out of nowhere. But I just want to make sure that everyone in the audience understands what item thirty-one is. Item thirty-one is designed to repeal all of these other ordinances that we have been coming in here and fighting for over and over and over. So later tonight, when we hopefully see you all vote yes on the other ordinances that we've been asking for, I want to make sure the people in the audience here recognize that that's not truly a win unless this ordinance is written correctly. It's supposed to include everything that we've been asking for, and it does not include pretextual stops the way that we've been asking for. I'm here, I'm wearing a mask tonight because I don't feel well. I'm sick. I got sick because I'm a foster parent, and I was fostering two little kids this weekend, a three-year-old and a five-year-old. They're black boys. And from my, from my home, you can look out the window and see blue flashing lights as part of the safety. I had to close the blinds in my home because they were so traumatized by seeing the blue lights and thinking that police were going to come and kill them. They are three and five. They're three years old and five years old. What are we doing with our policing? That that's a reality for these boys. I know there are several white people on the council that have children. Can you imagine your children thinking that they're going to be killed by police when they're three and five? They're in preschool.
Ms. Hoffberg?
Yes.
That's the conclusion of your time.
Was that two minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Councilman Carlisle.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Item number seven was the Holmesdale subdivision. Did they have their neighborhood meeting?
Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, they did, and the applicant has withdrawn that particular application at this time.
Thank you. So, item number seven, dealing with the Holmesdale subdivision, this item has been withdrawn. Okay. Now, we do have three, three cards for members of the public to speak, but this item has been withdrawn, so it's not under consideration by this council. I don't know if Ms. Keys, Mrs. Salisbury, or Attorney McCracken still want to speak on this item, but, okay.
They don't speak on it, it's withdrawn.
Okay. Ma'am, this item has been withdrawn, so there's, there's no need to speak on this item. So if it comes back before the council, you know, you're, you're free to come back and speak on that item at that, at that time. But this item has been withdrawn. So thank you all for coming down. Okay. So, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen to vote on our consent agenda, please?
Yes, yes. Yes. Canaly, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
Okay. That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call our fiscal consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have item number eleven, a resolution accepting and appropriating the sum of fifty thousand dollars funded by National Park Service American Civil Rights Grant, chargeable to the FY twenty-three budget for the National Park Service to support the Memphis Heritage Trail, District Six, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number twelve is a resolution to accept, allocate, and appropriate grant funding in the amount of two-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand, thirty-six dollars and two cents from the Mid-South Emergency Planning Coalition, Tennessee Hospital Education and Research Foundation. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Fire Services, and there is a request for same night minutes. On our add-ons, we have item number twenty-eight, resolution to amend the council FY twenty-three grant allocations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Canaly. There is a request for same night minutes. Item number twenty-nine is a resolution to amend the council FY twenty-three grant allocations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, and there is a request for same night minutes. Item number thirty is a resolution to amend the council FY twenty-three grant allocations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilman Ford Senior, and there is a request for same night minutes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen to vote on our fiscal consent? I see no members in the queue to speak on this item.
It's moved by Easter Thomas and seconded by Morgan.
Okay.
Canaly, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Show Councilmember Ford voting, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call our MLGNW fiscal consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That will take us on our regular agenda. Item number thirteen. A resolution approving change number one to contract number one-two-zero-two-seven, Voice PBX Systems Network Maintenance with Black Box Network Services Incorporated, to increase the current contract value in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. Item number fourteen is a resolution awarding a thirty-six-month purchase order to TR Miller Mill Company, Inc., for various sizes of Southern Yellow Pine Poles in the amount of nine million eight-hundred-ninety-one-thousand, one hundred dollars and sixty-five cents. Item number fifteen is a resolution awarding a thirty-six-month purchase order to Engineered Ceiling Components LLC for concrete standards in the amount of one million two-hundred-ninety-six-thousand, seven-hundred-forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. That item has been moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Canaly. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll? I mean, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canaly, Canaly, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. And Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item thirty-two?
Item number thirty-two on our add-ons is a joint resolution of the Memphis City Council and Shelby County Board of Commissioners, requesting the Shelby County District Attorney's Office and the courts to create and maintain a data dashboard. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by councilmembers Carlisle, Canaly, Colvet, Ford Senior, Johnson, Jones, Logan, Robinson, Vice Chairman Smiley, Swearengen Washington, and Warren. There is a request for same night minutes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Logan.
The committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
I moved.
Okay. That item was in committee, right?
Yes.
Councilwoman Logan?
Yes.
Okay.
I already said.
Okay, thank you. Has been moved by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members, I'm sorry, Councilman Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to read out the amendments to make sure everybody's comfortable. They were accepted in committee. Whereas, in an effort to better inform the public and maintain transparency between constituents and the District Attorney's Office, Juvenile Court, General Sessions Court, Environmental Court, big asterisk there, and Criminal Court, the Memphis City Council requests the current District Attorney Steve Mulroy and the respective judges oversee the above, that oversee the above-mentioned courts to create a data dashboard. Moving down in the second-to-last recital, it reiterates the, adding the courts, and then now therefore be resolved that the Memphis City Council hereby requests that the Shelby County District Attorney Steve Mulroy and judges responsible for the oversight of the Juvenile, General Sessions, Environmental, and Criminal Courts create and maintain a data dashboard to inform the public of Memphis about the role and operation of the respected offices and courts, as well as provide data on its efficiency and effectiveness in the disposition of cases. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Carlisle. Seeing no other members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canaly, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item thirty-three?
Item number thirty-three is a resolution to reallocate and appropriate two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from ARPA funds to the Methodist Healthcare Foundation to pay for city first responders to attend the foundation's mental health breakfast. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Canaly, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Thank you. Councilman Carlisle.
The committee, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
That item has been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Vice Chair Smiley. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Vote for item number thirty-three. Canaly, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item thirty-five?
Item number thirty-five is a resolution asking the Memphis Shelby County Schools Board of Education and Administration to allow nine-oh-one block squad to interact with students in all Memphis and Shelby County schools as needed to prevent violent activity. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Smiley for same night minutes.
Thank you.
So sponsored by everybody.
Councilwoman Smiley.
This resolution is sponsored by all council members per Vice Chairman Smiley.
Indeed. So this item has been moved by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canaly, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number thirty-seven? No, item number thirty-six was part of our consent agenda. Item number thirty-seven is your resolution.
Is what?
Oh, that was dream, okay, 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 okay. Was dream, okay, I'm sorry.
There's a lot going on here.
A lot, a lot. Colleagues, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add item number thirty-eight. Number thirty-eight is going to be our substitute amendment for our grant program as amended. So if there's no objection, we're going to suspend the rules so that we can take on, it was left off of the regular meeting agenda. It was supposed to be on here, and so that's why we need to suspend the rules to add it. As amended, yes, yes. So this is going to be item number thirty-eight.
Thirty-seven was thirty, coming back off ten.
It's all right.
Yes.
Without objection, Mr. Chairman.
So, yeah, without objection, the rules have been suspended so that we can add item number thirty-eight. And the thirty-eight, the caption on this is a substitute resolution to amend the Memphis City Council Community Grant Program for fiscal year twenty-four.
For the record, item number thirty-eight, a resolution to amend the Memphis City Council Community Grant Program for FY twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, the committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Okay.
Or my friends do.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilwoman, well, actually moved by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington, seconded by Councilwoman Logan. Councilman Warren, you're in the queue.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second. Yes.
Could we get the initiator of the motion to perhaps explain to the audience why we're doing this and what we... and what we hope to accomplish by it?
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Warren. Colleagues, the, I'm sorry, members of the public, the Memphis City Council, for at least since 2016, my first year on the council, we've had a grant program whereby the council sees fit to help other, to help nonprofit organizations in our community. So we have to approve this each year for each fiscal year. So this year, we will be, as a council, we will have $3.2 million. This resolution is to ask the mayor to prepare a budget that sets aside $3.2 million for the council to administer its grant program to nonprofit organizations here in the city. So this amendment here talks about some different rules and some changes that we've made for this next fiscal year. The application, so some of the amendments that were made in the meeting, in our budget meeting today, the application period will be open from May 15 through July 1. So nonprofit organizations can go to the city council's webpage and apply for grants on that page. You also, this will, part of the changes too in this is that council members must allocate 75% of the allocation by July 15 and the remaining 25 by November 1. So did I leave anything out, Mr. Warren, that you can think of? Okay.
I just wanted us to get that information out to people so they know they're going to have to start May 15, and they've got till July 1. And we, if they miss it, it's going to be the next year before they can get a grant.
Right, so we have six full weeks for nonprofit organizations to apply for the grant program for the fiscal year, '24 year. It has been moved and seconded. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes, Carlisle, yes, Colvett, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Logan, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Vice Chairman Smiley, yes, Swearengen Washington, yes, Warren, yes, Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 16?
Item number 16 is an ordinance to establish a procedure for the Memphis Police Department to conduct an annual independent review of the police training academy and all training techniques. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5848 is sponsored by council members Carlisle, Canali, and Smiley.
Thank you, Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met and recommended approval, and I so move.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. We don't have any council members in the queue to speak on this item, but I do have two comment cards. The first comment card is from Ms. Chelsea Glass, to be followed by Ms. P. Moses. So, Ms. P. Moses, after Ms. Glass, could you make your way to the front? Ms. Glass, please state your name and address for the record, please, and then your two minutes will begin.
Chelsea Glass. No matter what I do, I yell on this. 1315 Congress Avenue, 38104. I'm not going to take a lot of time here because basically, we got shut out of an opportunity to respond to Agenda Item 31. So I just want to come before the city council today and say no to Wade's ordinance and to please pass the three that Decarcerate Memphis are here supporting today. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
Good afternoon. P. Moses, 2383 Jackson. I was there earlier this morning when y'all were talking to CJ Davis about this, and I think there's some good things in place, but I think there needs to be more, especially since I watched my friend Salamander get manhandled by some male police officers the last time she was using her First Amendment right, which seems to be a problem with people in law enforcement. But I do think that there needs to be something added in there about diversity inclusion because according to cultural competency training, you're not effective in that training if you're not able to decipher between people of different genders. And no man should be manhandling any person that identifies as a woman. And she does, and I watched that happen, and I think that it needs to be something added in there. And again, we're available to help you get the proper training that you need. You know, we're not even looking for a check like the ones that you're going to be paying CJ Davis to do the training, but you need to talk to people who understand the community that identifies differently. We're not all the same. We're never going to be, Mr. Smiley. And it's just important for us to treat people the way we want to be treated in 2023. And I did not like seeing officers manhandle her. And I want to put that on the record that, you know, we have to treat people the way we want to be treated. And I save the rest for the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moses. Seeing no other, I'm sorry, Chief Davis.
Is it appropriate to respond to this particular?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
Well, what I wanted to say is, earlier in committee, this is one of those ordinances that we responded to. And what our position was is that we agreed to expand our training and get input from other individuals. We do diversity inclusion training and plan to have other entities to help support us as we expand training for our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Davis. Councilman Carlisle. Okay. So seeing no other members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canali, yes, Carlisle, yes, Colvett, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Logan, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Vice Chairman Smiley, yes, Swearengen Washington, yes, Warren, yes, Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 17? Thank you. Oh, so, yeah, 18, I'm sorry.
Item number 18 is an ordinance to amend the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Motor Traffic and Vehicles, Article 1, General Provisions and Definitions, to require the Division of Police Services to use only appropriately-marked law enforcement vehicles to conduct traffic stops. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5850, sponsored by Councilwoman Logan.
Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met and recommended approval, and I so move this as a substitute ordinance that you all should have. I did electronically. And just to note, in Section 141, under definitions, is where the substitute ordinance from our meeting this morning, we had some input from Attorney Wade, and we just wanted to make certain that we include everything necessary in this ordinance to make sure that it passes. And so the definition here is just a little bit more definitive. And you can, I can read that marked law enforcement vehicle means a law enforcement vehicle equipped with a, at least one light-bar assembly designed to display more than one steady-burning, flashing, or revolving beam of light with 360 degrees visibility, a horn, siren, electronic device, or exhaust whistle from which audible signals may sound, and graphics marking or decals clearly identifying MPD on at least three of the following four sides, front, rear, left, or right side. And then throughout, throughout the document, there have been, we crossed out or deleted a struck inappropriately-marked law enforcement vehicles because we spelled it out in the definitions, though. And with that, as I said, I so move.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Easter Thomas. We have several council members in the queue. Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilwoman Logan, so you're defining marked, hey, y'all. You're defining, setting the mood in here, huh? You're defining marked law enforcement vehicle. Is it referenced, you've then struck appropriately-marked law enforcement vehicles? So is this, where is this definition fitting in in the actual charter itself or in the code of ordinances?
I'm going to note where you see the, instead of putting it, you see where you.
Officers may only use marked law enforcement, okay. All right, got it.
And it just gave the definition up there.
So I guess I'll go to Attorney Wade.
Is he here?
Could you walk through for me, and I'm sure many others, the scope of exigent circumstances and some examples of what that would look like?
Michael. The way it was originally worded, it would have prohibited any unmarked car as defined previously. Unmarked cars can have the, and they do have, I mean, the police current policy says that they encourage officers to use marked cars for traffic stops. But they can use unmarked cars in, if necessary, if it has the lighting under the hood, I mean, the flashing lights. This, and I think this morning, the department said they were going to have a new traffic unit that would only use marked cars. And I think the only other change that was made that she didn't mention was the one that I suggested, is that it would, that you could use unmarked cars in exigent circumstances. And that may take place, for example, if an unmarked car is parked on the, on the exit of 385, and someone blows by them doing 90 with a roof kicked out and temporary tags, that that officer could, under those circumstances, pursue that car and make a traffic stop. That would be an exigent circumstance where he could not call a marked car to say, come, follow this car. That would be one example.
Chief Davis, are you still around down that way? Hey, Chief.
Hello.
Chief, as a senior law enforcement officer for the city of Memphis and a national expert, does this ordinance hinder your ability to keep the public safe?
Well, the ordinance says it's written that we haven't had an opportunity to take a deeper dive in it. We just got the one that Attorney Wade has presented to us. I will say, the example he gave was a very good example. Just last week, I was on the expressway in my unmarked car with my driver, and tires became, started flying off of the vehicle in front of us, off the back of a truck. And we had to stop this vehicle because other vehicles were rearing off the road to avoid all the tires that were coming off the truck. Classic example of exigent circumstances. But those types of circumstances happen on a regular basis for our officers. They, we have detectives, our whole detective bureau drives unmarked cars. They witness all kinds of emergencies and other situations that they're compelled to respond to. So as it's, as it's written, as Attorney Wade has written the language, we feel like we can work within the confines of that language.
So you don't feel like your officers will be hindered? There is enough room for them to exercise discretion in order to keep the.
Absolutely.
The public safe.
She said absolutely.
What?
She said absolutely.
Yeah, yes. To keep the public safe and also to ensure that the appropriate safeguards are intact for the public.
If I'm correct, I did read earlier in this particular ordinance, under exigent circumstances, it is written in there, correct?
Yes, ma'am. If you, that's what I was, so basically, we, she, Councilwoman Logan struck appropriately marked, defined marked law enforcement, said marked law enforcement shall be used only in a vehicle stop absent of exigent circumstances. So if the litmus test for an unmarked vehicle is that they can conduct a traffic stop in a scenario like you laid out or Attorney Wade laid out?
For traffic stops, yes.
Okay, so you feel comfortable?
Yes.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Carlisle. Councilwoman Logan, before I hear from Councilwoman Logan, let me recognize Councilman Vice Chair Smiley.
So I think, I think when we talk about exigent circumstances, I think we should be using the legal definition. I'm assuming the.
Talk to the mic, please.
Okay. I think we're, our conversation is about exigent circumstances. I think we should be using the legal definition of an exigent circumstance. Attorney Wade, I think when we talk, I think there's about three or four different scenarios that fall under the category of exigent circumstances. One, expulsion of evidence. We believe that someone is going to get rid of evidence that is pertaining to a crime, chasing a fleeing felon. And then there is another one.
Well, I think in this context, remember, a traffic stop is only made when someone is perceived to be creating a danger to other people using the roadway.
So we're also talking about, I guess, when there's someone, the officer reasonably believes that someone could potentially cause harm to someone else.
Yes.
So that, so that's the only definition that will apply in this context?
The only two that I've given you tonight and Chief Davis gave you, those were classic examples of it, yes.
Okay, so I think in terms of clarity, shouldn't we put that in there? Shouldn't we be adding, adding the definition of exigent circumstances? So there's no ambiguity in what, in what we mean by exigent circumstances?
Is there a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay, received. Accepted.
Absolutely, thank you.
So I would, I would ask, though, if you could have that language prepared and we.
We'll add it to it.
From what, from what you've provided.
Absolutely. Brandon is.
I mean, as I understand your comments, if it is perceived to create a danger to themselves or others, which we use in the context of excessive and unnecessary force, they're allowed to use that if they believe that, that the person is a threat to someone else or the officer himself.
So reasonably believe that someone is a potential threat to themselves or someone else?
Yes.
Brandon has it. I think, you know, when we're talking, we're using. Oh, yeah, I'm not talking to the mic today. When we're using definitions in the ordinance, we also need to be very clear what certain words mean and exigent circumstances can mean a couple different. All right.
Thank you, Councilwoman Logan.
Just wanted to make certain that the public and everyone knew that as a body that we want to make certain, this ordinance is to make certain that during traffic stop, that not only the person being stopped, but the police and everyone around is safe. is safe and kept from harm. So I appreciate the friendly amendment and received that, and want to thank, uh, Attorney Wade for his input as well, to make certain that we all are kept safe and we don't have another situation like we had previously. So thank you for that, I appreciate it. I yield back, Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, back to exigent circumstances, I want to drill down on that a little bit more, especially as it comes to something like speeding. So we hear the example of 90 miles an hour is exigent, but, so at what number is it considered an imminent danger and what number is it not? So let's, you know, if somebody's on Union Avenue, speed limit is 40, is five miles an hour imminent? Is six? Is 10? Is 11? Like, so what number, and is it different for school zone, construction? I'd like to understand the other side of it, rather than just the extreme example of a 90 mile an hour. How is this gonna impact?
Well, the language-
Speeding, for example.
Yeah. So the language as is, since we added a definition of exigent circumstance, it says a reasonable person would believe, and we know reasonable person, that, that ultimately be up for the course to decide. There, there's no-
Would a reasonable person ever say that speeding is not an imminent danger to the driver or others on the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Moore says-
If you're doing six miles an hour over, if you're doing six miles an hour over the speed limit, you may be breaking laws, but you're probably not being dangerous.
Okay, great.
So I mean, that's, that's an example.
Six, then seven.
Maybe seven or eight, but I mean, a lot, if the traffic is flowing with you, and the traffic's doing 42, so I mean, it's, that's reasonable. If I'm doing 80 and it's 42, that's not reasonable.
Okay. And what is, what, I mean, what argument is the defense attorney gonna make? Um, my mic is right here. So what argument is the defense attorney gonna make? What argument is the judge going to accept, you know, in terms of where, where is the line drawn? What are we gonna advise our officers in their training of what qualifies as exigent circumstances, of what they should, uh, should begin a pursuit and what they should not? Because we draw it out for them, I mean, to the letter. We've, we've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of policies and procedures. Everything is laid out there. How are we gonna define it to the officers of go, no-go?
That's an administration.
Okay, to the administration, to Chief Davis, or to-
Davis, uh, Chief Sink.
Or Chief Sink.
Did you all want to speak to that?
And so, a, a question that I have too, along those lines. Do we not already have, I guess, a, a certain amount, to use speeding, for example, over a certain amount is considered reckless driving, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so-
Yes, it is.
If, if that's already been established, or isn't that established someplace else in another ordinance, state law, whatever the case may be?
Yes.
Well, that will take care of this speeding instance. So we know that five miles per hour over, back to your example, in a, in a 25 mile per hour zone, is not excessive. But 45, or 65 in a 25, then that would be, and that would come under reckless driving, and there are other things that would capture that.
And other ordinances that would describe similar exigent circumstances, even hit and runs, where, where individuals are injured and witnessed by someone in a detective vehicle.
Okay.
The, the commission of a felony, exigent circumstances.
Councilman Morgan.
So reckless driving is the minimum barrier for an unmarked car if this passes and able to initiate pursuit?
I'm not prepared to-
Um, actually, hey, Chairman mentioned that there are other ordinances that can speak to what that threshold would be. He's not saying use the reckless driving ordinance to bear that. Ch- Chairman and Chief, and Chief Sink and Attorney Wade have already spoken that there are, or agreed that there are other ordinances that can speak to that and govern that threshold of how many miles over, how fast, how much. That's not what we're debating. I mean, you know, that's not what's at stake right here. We're putting those measures in place to define that, and you can use the precedent that's already there for that.
I, I'm trying to ask the, the, I mean, the administration how they would define it.
And they just, that's what she just said. She agreed.
Well, no, we got into reckless driving, we got into DUIs, we got into hit and runs. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand where the rubber meets the road. When this thing passes, how will it impact our unmarked cars and their ability to make traffic stops? Uh, what would change, not at the maximum level of the example of 90 miles an hour and 385, but at the minimum level, what's the barrier? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the range of what's impacted, and I, I don't think the council member or the administration's answered that yet.
So that could be a list, that, and, and I understand what you're saying. What would those different circumstances be that could, uh, in fact, be a list of different types of scenarios that would, um, what could be characterized as exigent circumstances? Um, we could work on a list, but what, uh, we do want to convey is that undercover vehicles are not utilized for the routine purpose of traffic enforcement-
Mm-hmm.
-on a daily basis. We have marked vehicles that are utilized for traffic enforcement. However, there are certain situations, if you witness a particular serious incident, then an officer would be compelled to follow that vehicle, whether it's a commission of a felony in the presence of that officer. And, you know, I know we're trying to use reckless driving, but that's one example.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I yield back.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Uh, Councilman Logan, did you want to follow up with this? Uh, Vice Chair Smiley, you've spoken. Are you still in the queue?
I'm out.
Okay. Um, colleagues, we have, and members of the public, we have 19 cards for this item. So that's just on this item. Excuse me. So, we have, uh, it looks, it appears that we have 13 members, uh, members of the public wishing, wishing to speak for this, six to speak against. So we have other items on the agenda that's gonna speak to this. So what I'm gonna do, for each side for this item, I'm going to allocate 15 minutes to each, each, uh, this, this is a meeting, this is, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. For, for those-
[inaudible]
So, it is the chair's discretion and the will of this body. This is, let, let me remind you. So.
No, no.
Look, we will have order in here today. This is an item that we're being asked to vote on, and so we have multiple items where we have, we're gonna have public comment. And so this, it's, ma'am, ma'am, if another outburst like that takes place, I'm gonna have you removed from the audience. But this is a, this is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public. So I'm going to allocate 15 minutes per side for this item. So, Councilwoman Esther Thomas?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I want to be added as a co-sponsor for this ordinance with Councilwoman Logan.
Okay.
Did you hear?
Yes.
Did you hear me?
Hold on. Councilwoman Esther Thomas would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this item. So, we will hear those who are against this first, and we have Darrell Sheffield. And so please be mindful that there are other speakers who would like to speak, and all of you all who are speaking against this item will be allotted 15 minutes to do so. And you don't have, neither side has to take all 15 minutes because there are other items to speak on. Mr. Sheffield, please state your name and address for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, my name is Darrell L. Sheffield. I am a retired Colonel from the Memphis Police Department.
Okay, what's, what's your home address, sir?
My home address-
Yes.
4485 Waverly Farm.
City and state?
That's Millington, Tennessee.
Okay. Mr. Sheffield, our rules state that you have to be a citizen of, a resident of the city of Memphis to speak on this item.
Okay.
So, I, I, we appreciate your service to the Memphis Police Department, but this is gonna be a, a long night, Mr. Sheffield, and I'm gonna have to be a stickler for the rules for both sides tonight.
Okay, so-
So-
I will not be allowed to speak-
No, sir.
Having served the city of Memphis 35 years.
Thank you, Mr. Sheffield. Our next speaker is Seth Cochler. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Seth Co- Seth Coker, 3582 Memphis Avenue.
Coker, sorry about that, yes.
Um, I'm a University of Memphis student. I live within walking distance of the university. Um, within the last six months, we have had someone shot behind our property. Um, Eliza Fletcher was abducted just down the road. Um, a gang member shoot at our house and my friends. Countless vehicle break-ins, car thefts, reckless driving, and a good friend of mine and his girlfriend robbed, um, at gunpoint on campus. Uh, this is not sustainable. Um, crime is consuming our lives every day. It is out of control. Uh, we need to reach the goal of 2,700 officers. We need more traffic enforcement. We need criminals to be held accountable. Um, groups like Decarcerate Memphis represent just a small faction of citizens and voters. Um, their demands are not the demands of the majority.
Hey, Jones, excuse me.
I don't see the need to remove unmarked cars from traffic enforcement. It makes us less safe. We need our specialized units. We need our police. We need our police, police to do what they need. Uh, we need safety. Thank you.
Chairman, guys. May I say something? Well, there are a lot of clout. They didn't shout anybody down. It's not on both sides. It's one side who's shouting people down. One side who's shouting people down.
Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we, we are very happy to see all of you here engaging in the process, and yes, we do believe in the First Amendment. For many of you who have been here several meetings, the council and other members of the audience have listened patiently and quietly to other people's opinions and viewpoints. That's the entire purpose. You cannot sit here and talk about the First Amendment and shout down somebody that has a different opinion than you. I absolutely can. We can have a constitutional conversation afterwards, but you asked us to give you time to listen, and we're trying to give other people an opportunity to speak too. If they disagree with you, let them finish what they have to say. The sheer example of fascism is shouting down somebody that has a different viewpoint than you.
Our, our next speaker is Missy Rayner. Miss, Missy Rayner?
I got it. Missy Rayner, 2145, uh, Memphis, Tennessee, 38119. Um, I want to thank you all for your service to this community, and I want to know, I want you to know that I'm a member of the Back the Blue 901. As you look out into this crowd and you see a sea of blue, I want you to grasp the seriousness of your decisions and votes. Citizens of Memphis are frightened like they've never been before and tired of living in fear. I never felt this fear until my nephew Drew Rayner, the Rhodes College student, was murdered in a home invasion, October 2021. Citizens are exhausted by the men and women, for the men and women who wear the blues so proudly, because it seems that their hard work is, in arresting criminals, is all in vain. Citizens are tired of the juvenile court system, the judges and the DA, for not fulfilling their oaths of office to protect the same citizens who elected them. Citizens are asking and even demanding that you, as our leaders, who were elected by us, to help us supporting the MPD and not tearing them down. At the end of the day, they are citizens like us with families, and as some have said, they too are frightened by the crime when they remove their uniforms and become one of us. The police academy is graduate, graduating more and more qualified men and women, and next year's budget, I believe, has a cushion for more money, but you can't stop there. MPD and Memphians need to see that you are counsel by your actions, support the good of MPD, that you have its back as it has ours. The horrendous death of Tyree Nichols at the hands of the five bad cops should not be a punishment to the entire force. Thank you, MPD and council for your service. We're trying to keep Memphis a shining star for all to see.
Thank you, Miss Rayner. Our next speaker is Melissa Pope. Melissa Pope. Our next speaker is Melissa Pope.
Melissa Pope, 6725 Neshoba Road. Um, I want to share an example that I saw recently while calling on a client in Midtown. Um, I was at the corner of Overton Park and Cleveland at an office that has, um, a lot of glass facing that corner, and I see a car traveling at a high rate of speed. There's a police officer behind him, a marked car, turns his lights on to pull the gentleman over, or I assume a gentleman, whoever, the driver. Um, and that driver proceeded to fly at probably 60, 80 miles an hour down Cleveland, through a red light. So they're not stopping for marked cars, so why not have unmarked cars out there? It doesn't matter. The rats are running riot, and we're tired of it. It's the Wild West. We need more cops, and we need more oversight so that we can actually start having consequences for actions in the city, because there's none.
Thank you. Carolyn Burr. Carolyn Burr. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Burr, are you, are you for or against? You're against?
No.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Knights. Okay, just a second, Ms. Burr. Ms. Knights, Ms. Knights, we put, yeah, take us back to 11:30? Yeah. Okay, uh, Reverend Mark Matheny, are you for or against?
Four.
Four? Okay, so that concludes our commentos, commentators who are, uh, against this ordinance. So we'll start those who are in favor of the ordinance. And Reverend Mark Matheny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members. Uh, I live at 1509 Granville Lane in Midtown, 38104, and I'm a minister with 52 years' service here in Memphis, uh, and I'm president of United Methodist Neighborhood Centers of Memphis Incorporated-
Okay.
-and work with several other nonprofit groups. I've had the privilege of invocation here at the council, uh, four times over these 52 years, and, um, stand in the legacy of the Memphis Ministers Association and heroes of our history like Henry Starks and Rabbi James Wax, who, uh, were so active on behalf of that organization of ministers in 1968 in bringing justice. I saw a, uh, I'm not in charge of the prayer today, but I saw one the other day and I've heard it several times, and I brought a copy to give to the council by whatever channel is appropriate. Uh, it's called "The Prayer," and it's become famous as a duet by Andrea Bocelli and Celine Dion. Some of you have probably heard it. You can reach it on YouTube and other sources. Beautiful prayer, and part of the words are about the city of Goodabode in Mount Heart. "God, lead us to a place, guide us with your grace, to a place where we'll be safe." Amen.
Amen.
Um, listening to the voices of people over these last few weeks, especially since the, the death of Tyree Nichols, and I, um, I feel like that we're at a crucial moment in our history as Memphis. It's time for us to listen to one another, to spread love and respect, and, and, and to live for each other and to share love. And I believe, uh, very strongly, we should pass sensible police reform, such as, um, the, the reforms that are suggested by the group MICA and other good groups. And I think we need to create an atmosphere, also, where great qualified personnel want to be policemen and want to serve in public safety and to work with folks to decrease crime and increase love and righteousness.
Excuse me, Reverend Matheny. Reverend Matheny, excuse me. Uh, we want you to be mindful that there are other speakers that we've allotted 15 minutes for everybody who's speaking in favor of this, and so we-
I'm on the last, last sentence.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on the last sentence, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much, and let's, let's truly become- Thank you very much, and let's, let's truly become a city of good abode. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carolyn Burr.
Carolyn Burr, two-nine-seven-two, Millers Pond Drive, three eight one one nine. Today, I join the community calling for strong new ordinances such as Items eighteen and twenty-one. Memphis cannot heal its police problems, let alone its crime problems, by adding a few new sentences to existing law and attaching Tyree Nichols' name. The officers responsible for the death of Tyree Nichols knew existing law well. That's why in the videos, we hear them rehearsing the affidavit that will tell their version of events. Officer Martin says, "I just got him out of the car and said, 'Bra, you good?'" And he swung, almost hit me. Another officer says, "He had his hand on Martin's gun." In the videos, we hear a chorus of officers say, "He's high, he's high as a kite." Because Tyree Nichols died, we have now seen this body cam and Sky Cop footage, and we know this officer's story was a lie. If Tyree Nichols had not died, his experience would likely be very much like one I learned about recently. An arrest affidavit from June twenty-fourth, written by Officer Mills, reveals similar problems in process. This June event, this June arrest, like the one seven months later, involved a black man who, by all evidence, was not operating his car in a way that put others in danger. Scorpion One officers approached this man on the pretext that his window temp was too dark. As in the case of Tyree Nichols, Officer Martin pulled the man out of his car. The affidavit tells a version of the story that includes a swung elbow and chemical spray. The fire department, an ambulance, and the lieutenant were called. Seven Scorpion One officers were on scene, including Officer Knoll, who is familiar to many of us here today because of his involvement in the two thousand eighteen shooting of Martavius Banks. The driver was charged with multiple felonies and misdemeanors, but here's the kicker. On December fourteenth, prosecutors determined the case could not be prosecuted because, in fact, there was no case. No crimes were prevented in either the killing of Tyree Nichols or the assault on this man, but great harm was done. It's in your hands to bring real medicine to our community. Please pass Items eighteen and twenty-one today and Item seventeen in the future, and please continue to use your positions to help us heal our community.
Thank you.
My name is Amber Sherman. I live at six zero seven zero North Bell Grove Cove, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one five. I'm here to speak in favor of passing Item eighteen, and I'm extremely upset and disappointed that this body won't be voting on Item seventeen to end the use of pretextual traffic stops, the exact type of traffic stop used to murder Tyree, and as you all heard this morning in committee from Mr. Boda's presentation, to discriminate against black community members. Emphasis on black community members. Every time a black person is pulled over or approached by police, we're in a complete and utter fear for our lives. How much more do we have to take? How much more trauma? How much more violence? How much more terrorism? Black men in the city of Memphis are three-point-seven times more likely to be pulled over than a white person, white man. Black women in Memphis are four-point-two times more likely to be pulled over than a white woman in the city of Memphis. Your police chief, Sarah Lynn Davis, just got up here and said that they don't use unmarked cars and plainclothes officers when we know the specialized units use unmarked cars and wore plainclothes when they pulled over Tyree. You literally have officers on camera in hoodies who said they were conducting a routine traffic stop. So how you can blatantly lie like that, I don't understand, but you know, police do lie, often. Home invasions and gun violence have nothing to do with traffic enforcement. These things literally do not correlate. Using fear-mongering and scare tactics of violence from a home invasion is completely separate from a traffic stop. This morning during committee, we heard baseless pushback to the data transparency ordinance about costs, and I think it's very telling that when we talk about transparency, police officials complain about price, but when we talk about new equipment and more officers, price is irrelevant. You have a chance today to be on the right side of history, to be on the people's side, a city that's majority-black and majority-black folks who are dying in traffic stops. You have a chance to affirm that you believe, black people, that you trust us when we tell you that what's really going to keep us safe, and that you're going to take the necessary steps to make that happen. When we do come into contact with police, officers should be clearly identifiable. Their motives for the stop or detainment should be transparent, and the stops and what occurs during them should be reported to citizens on a public platform. I've watched as so many public officials have used this tragic moment of Tyree Nichols' murder for interviews and publicity, and now you have a chance to join us in a movement to save black lives and make the right choice and vote in favor of these ordinances so we can move to a long-term solution that will save our lives. We are dying, and y'all up here playing around with these white folks clapping randomly, they not dying in traffic stops. I'm asking you to pick a side. I'm, I'm asking you to pick a side.
Ms., Ms. Sherman, please be mindful that there, I have-
I got you.
-at least a dozen more people to speak.
I got you.
Ms., Ms., LJ Abraham, you're next. Ms. Sherman, please-
I got you. I'm asking this body to pick a side. Cover-ups or transparency? Brutality or freedom? Corruption or accountability? What side are you on?
LJ Abraham, one ninety-nine South McLean.
Before, Ms. Abraham, hold on one second. Mr. Cash, you're next. Harry Cash, you're next. Ms. Abraham.
I just gave it. LJ Abraham, one ninety-nine South McLean. So, I find it quite funny that today of all days, on the third reading of this ordinance, we have this whole group of white people that have opposition to these ordinances taking place. We've been here for every reading that has taken place this time. This is, this is three, this is three readings, though, of this, and none of these white people were here to speak about their, their lack of feeling safe. We don't feel safe with the police. I had a conversation with CJ personally and told her the same thing that I'm standing here telling y'all today. I never feel safe when it comes down to police. My siblings don't feel safe when it comes to police. The black people sitting in this room don't feel safe when it comes to police, but adding unmarked police cars to that makes it even more dangerous. It's a problem. I don't know who's pulling up on me if it's an unmarked car. How do I identify you? Because you got some lights? I can buy some lights on Amazon and put them on my window and identify myself as a police officer. So how is that making us safe? This is like literally common sense. I'm not going to bow down to the fears of white people that don't have to worry about the same things that I have to worry about when I'm being pulled over by the police. I'm not going to sit up here and listen to their white tears and their ignorance to what it looks like to be a black man like Tyree walking around in the city of Memphis, a predominantly black city. So on that, I'm going to say, please pass these ordinances that we're asking for. This is the third time we've come to y'all about these things, and y'all need to listen to us. We are the citizens that y'all need to listen to, not these white tears.
Name and address for the record, please, Ms. Cash. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Harry T. Cash the Third, and I live at forty-one ninety-nine Tewahler Avenue, and I am in support of all the police reform ordinances. And before I get started, Commissioner Carlisle, another example of a fascist state is a police And Commissioner Jones, I'm going to call, I'm going to call you Martavius, and I'm going to call you Martavius. And I wasn't going to say this until I saw you cut the time, and it's coming from my heart. You remember we was in New Path, and I worked your campaign, the first one you won? Well, my mom worked at Memphis City Schools and died of cancer, and the money I got from her, you invested it for me. And so, we have a connection, even though we don't talk as often as we used to, and so what I'm asking you before I make my comments is to reconsider this time, because the time that I invested and the money I invested, this is not what I invested in, in terms of cutting community input on something else. And this coming from a place of love as a brother. Now to my comment, and this for everybody. One, the people that are-
Ms., Ms. Cash, Ms. Cash, direct all your comments to the council.
The folks that's in opposition, thank you for being here, because this is part of democracy. The people that's in favor and for it, a lot of folks like pay parking fees and all that come down here, which is why people need to be heard, and I was out of town when Tyree Nichols' stuff happened, and I just got in town last week from dealing with mental health issues, and it's a lot of trauma and stress in this city, and the violence is a reflection of it, which means it's complexities around it, and you can't police yourself out of it. And I think it's important to talk about receipts, because in order for you to be making comments, because sometimes like if you, if you against this, right, I want you to be in favor of when Memphis Tomorrow was marketing Memphis for low-wage jobs. I want you to be down here, too, when the State of Tennessee Economic Division was promoting the state of Tennessee in terms of low-wage jobs. And so this is really a lot about poverty. And so, when I was out of town, a part of my receipts is, I was the managing youth services of the city of Memphis for five years, twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen. I was a mentor for Memphis City Schools for environmental wars from the sixth grade to they graduating, and I still talk to them to this day. I'm a foster parent through youth villages. I put in work for community, work for organizations, I work for MICA. And so, compassion, this is a quote from this book called Mindful Race, Transforming Racism from the Inside Out. It says, "Compassion is the natural response to this blindness. It arises whenever we see our human situation clearly. To see our struggles with, quote, kindly eyes, we need compassion, not anger, to help us be tender with our difficulties and not close off to them in fear." Because this what, this what it really is. This is how healing takes place. In twenty-sixteen, and this is more of a historical lesson, in twenty-sixteen, Timmy Sawyer started a petition against Bill Gibbons, and I want to call out Bill Gibbons, too, because he behind the scenes, and we need to call out him more, because he in particular pushed to hire former NYC Police Commissioner Raymond Kelly, who was the creator of a Stop and Frisk, and that illegally targeted black and brown people in New York City. The Commercial Appeal did stories about it, and I emailed over a hundred people, some of y'all own the council now, Strickland, the mayor over Shelby County now, county commissioners and some of the candidates that's running for mayor. Nobody said a word, and nobody responded, and Bill Gibbons moved forward with their plan. And this is what we feared, a Tyree Nichols' death. And so, i- in conclusion, now with these ordinances, ordinances, we're trying to work within a political system, even though there are sections of the community who would rather get rid of current police form altogether, just be honest, and redirect those resources back into community. So hopefully, city council leaders who want to support the reclamation of our humanity, because that's really what it's about, will be on the right side of this issue, because if not, people who value peace, compassion, and love like me are losing patience with working within a system that continuously puts us on the defense of surviving instead of thriving, which we deserve.
Councilwoman Logan, you're, you're in the queue. I'm going to recognize council members that are in the queue now, followed by Councilman Warren, Carlisle, and East Thomas. Mike, fuck. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll let them go, and I'll go last.
Well, let me recognize the other council members. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we have a city right now where we have people afraid, and people are afraid of crime, and people are afraid of the police. So what we have is a city that's scared, and what we need is a police department that can protect us from crime and not kill us indiscriminately, and I think that's what we're trying to do here with this way we've crafted this particular ordinance. Right now, we've listened to people who said, "We don't want unmarked cars just out patrolling and pulling people randomly," but we've also listened to our citizens who said, "We want our police officers to be able to protect us when someone's doing something crazy and might put us in harm's way." So, in my mind, the way that we crafted this particular ordinance, we can do both, and I'm going to vote for this because it allows our police department in, in unmarked cars, if somebody's doing something to pull people over, but it also, so if you're, it doesn't mean unmarked cars can't pull anybody. If they see something wrong, someone's speeding recklessly or doing something dangerous, they'll pull it. We're just saying, our regular police cars will be the ones that do traffic stops, and our department just put twelve people on a traffic detail, because we're listening to our citizens, it's crazy on those roads out there, you just have to drive it, and you know, you got to look in your rearview mirror when you're doing sixty-five or seventy on the interstate, someone may run you over from behind. Everyone knows that. We know our kids are killing each other. We need our police to do a good job and keep all of us safe. So this is not an either-or, this is a both-and, and voting for this now, I think, gives some protection to people who are worried about unmarked cars doing what they shouldn't do, but it also allows unmarked cars to protect us, so I'm going to vote for it for that reason. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. Councilwoman East Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Two things. One, on the subject of the ordinance, I do want to thank Councilwoman Logan just for singularly bringing this before us, and I definitely support it wholeheartedly as we think of it as just one piece, and I think Councilman Warren just eloquently put, trying to be, look at both sides of it. And there are definitely so many anecdotal experiences that a lot of us can recount of probable fear that comes when you may see a marked car come up behind you or beside you or be stopping your brother or cousin or whomever. So I think that this will be a step in the right direction, and I want to thank Councilwoman Logan for bringing that forth, and I also ask any other council members to join me as a co-sponsor with her on this ordinance that we're going to vote for, as I think it definitely can add to the safety of a lot of black and brown folks and others in the city. Second, secondly, Chair, one thing that I did not, I will say transparently, that I did not think about before one of the comments was made, is that folks do pay their parking meters and such to come down here and speak, so just, I don't know how many items we have for, how many cars we have for the next items on here, but just if we can, I mean, we probably going to be down here all night anyway, if we can look at how much time, consideration, just on the fact that folks do take a lot to get down here, and so just wanted to put that before consideration for you.
Thank you, Councilwoman East Thomas. Councilwoman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to be added to, as a sponsor for this particular ordinance, and I, too, like Jeff Warren, will be supporting this ordinance because it takes care of both ends of our spectrum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Smiley, would you read your amendment into the record, if you don't mind? Do you have a copy?
I think my colleagues are so eager to give me a copy of my amendment.
Heavy is the crown of the vice chairman.
Y'all don't need me today. Y'all doing what's right.
Highlight it. Exigent.
Where is it? Oh, okay. So I'm going to read the definition of exigent circumstances, which was added to this particular ordinance. Exigent circumstances means circumstances that will cause a reasonable person to believe that prompt action was necessary to prevent imminent dangers to life or serious property damage.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Attorney Wade, if I could steal you one more time. As you crafted this language in the comprehensive bill, do you feel like this gives our officers enough discretion in order to execute their mission while protecting people from unnecessary or racial bias in stops? or racial bias in stops?
I think you're mixing things.
Pretext.
On a traffic stop, I think it does give them sufficient discretion and parameters of how to execute traffic stops.
Yeah, I have to agree with Councilman Warren. I think that this doesn't hinder, Chief Davis is our law enforcement expert, she's the chief law enforcement officer, she does not feel like this does anything to hinder her officer's ability to execute the law. And so for me, if I'm able to find a compromise between two parties, and most importantly, that the experts in the room feel like it doesn't do anything to hinder safety of citizens, I don't see anything wrong with it. And if it turns out as we collect data that it goes one way or the other, we can always come back and tweak policies and procedures. Officers have a duty under state law to intervene, not only in circumstances like Tyree Nichols where they're held accountable, but when someone's breaking the law. And they offer discretion, but ultimately, they have a charge when they take an oath of office as post-certified to execute when someone is breaking the law.
That should be triggered.
Yikes.
Ms. Young, will you please remove that individual from the chambers?
Words have multiple definitions, like, I, like, it's been a long day. I just, I'm just not in the mood. I'm just not in the mood. So for me, anyway, our officers, all right, our officers have a duty to their oath and to, as certified peace officers in the state of Tennessee, to execute state law. And so that also means downward into anything that contravenes in local ordinance is superseded by state law in the United States Constitution. So for me, I have no problem supporting this ordinance solely because the chief of police is comfortable with how it's written and that her officers will be able to do their job. So I'm going to be supporting it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have 10 other cards here, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask if the individuals whose cards I have in my hand, if you have signed up to speak on additional items or not. So Ms. Rucker, Tequila Rucker, have you signed up to speak on more than one item? Okay. Madam Comptroller, will you please give her two minutes, please?
Tequila Rucker, 1000 South Cooper, 38104. I serve as the community organizer for Memphis For All and also a partner for the Justice and Safety Alliance. I want to first thank those of you that took a meeting, a call, or responded to an email to hear concerns from the community. As elected officials, you work for the people. Today, I stand with the people and for the people that elected you into office asking you to pass these ordinances presented as they are and with the recommended amendments. We understand that you consult and rely on Allen Wade for guidance. However, the people did not elect Allen Wade. They elected and rely on you. We ask that you not insult your constituents by dismissing or watering down any of the ordinances. We are merely asking that measures be put in place that will prevent police officers from being put in situations or putting us in situations that could result in being beat, killed, or unethical arrest. This ask is reasonable, and it's appalling that we even have to ask for something that should be common sense. I didn't watch the video. However, the psychological impact is real. It doesn't stop me from tensing up when a police car pulls behind me or beside me. Whether there's a threat or not, I'm afraid as a black woman. I begin to question myself, am I doing everything right? Because I don't know what the outcome could be. The first steps to feeling safe within our community starts with you. And a vote against any of these ordinances and a vote for Allen Wade's ordinance is a vote against Tyree Nichols' family. Thank you.
Ms. Winho, have you signed up to speak on another item?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to hear you on the next item. Ms. Fairfield, have you signed up to speak on another item?
No.
Okay. Ms. Adams, have you signed up to speak on another item?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to hear you on the next item for those individuals who have multiple cards. Ms. Glass, have you signed, will you be speaking on another item, Ms. Glass? Rasul, Seema Rasul, have you signed up to speak on another item?
No.
Okay. Ms. Hoffberg, take it that you've signed up to speak on another item? Okay. L Charme, have you signed up to speak on another item?
No.
Okay, so please come forward, you have two minutes to speak on this item.
My name is L Charme. I live 3160 Spotswood, 3111. May 11th, 2021, I had to go to Little Rock for work, I work in Little Rock. And I drove across the bridge that morning with no incidents. By the time I was coming back to Memphis that night, the bridge was shut down because following a routine bridge inspection on the I-40 Bridge, an engineer discovered a fracture that was so severe that he made a call to 911, and he said, we've got to get people off of the bridge immediately. Nothing had happened, no one had been hurt, but we recognized that there was a situation that was potentially very dangerous and would have been very deadly. And we shut the bridge down for a very long time. Again, I live, I work in Little Rock, I have to cross that bridge twice a day most days. It was a long time. There's also been a long time that the police in Memphis have been killing people following pretextual traffic stops. Right now, you've got the people of Memphis on a bridge, and our bridge has a severe fracture in it. We've got to get people off this damn bridge. We've got to end pretextual traffic stops in the city of Memphis, and I would invite the people standing behind me who didn't take the time to learn about how poverty affects crime, who don't understand that it's not the communities that have the most cops that are the safest, but the communities that have the most resources who are the I would invite them to take out a device that looks similar to this, pull up Google, and learn a couple things.
Ms. Adam Nelson, have you signed up to speak on another item?
No.
Okay, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. I'm Adam Nelson, 1624 Faxon. The main thing that I want you to understand today is that you received a letter from Mayor Strickland this morning that made some claims about these ordinances, and I want to correct the record. A reference to a statute about unmarked cars is misquoted. The statute cited says basically that sheriff's departments have to mark certain vehicles in a certain way, and that no other law enforcement agency could use the sheriff's emblems on their own vehicles. The administration is misquoting subsection B, which reads, "Nothing in this section shall prohibit a county sheriff's department from operating unmarked cars for undercover or other purposes." So the statute does not apply to MPD in the first place. Furthermore, the language quote "for any purpose" quote does not appear in the statute. The idea that MPD is allowed to use unmarked cars for any purpose is ridiculous. Obviously, they can't use unmarked cars for illegal purposes, and if the council were to prohibit the use of unmarked cars to affect traffic stops as the ordinance would do, that would make such use of unmarked cars illegal. Furthermore, the Wade ordinance that purports to capture the spirit of these ordinances does not do so. It strips them of all of the components that are the most important to all the community people gathered here today. Please do not fall for that trick. Please pass the ordinances with the amendments that we have recommended and honor your duty to the people of Memphis. Thank you.
Trinity Williams, have you signed to speak on another item? Okay.
My name is Trinity Williams, 2000 North Park, grade 38112. Good afternoon. I'm a current Rose student at Rose College, and I'm speaking to urge you to vote to pass these ordinances to end the use of unmarked cars and plainclothes police officers to make the city safer. By passing these ordinances, the council will take another step closer in fulfilling the promise to act in the best interest of the citizens of Memphis. And these ordinances call for an end to the abusive, discriminatory, and violent policing culture onto black and brown bodies in Memphis, but also provides a much more just system to Memphis at large. The use of unmarked cars and the use of plainclothes officers is an abuse of power which amplifies the distrust between citizens and law enforcement officers. As a black person who loves this community, I want to be able to make my family proud and receive a strong education from my college without fearing unjust and biased police violence. Passing these ordinances sets a precedent to combat the expansion of abusive policing culture onto campus universities, and without these ordinances passed, it is injustice to those who have lost their lives to police brutality. It is an injustice to those who are living within police brutality. It is an injustice to those within the Mississauga community, and as MLK has said, an injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere. And to vote yes on these ordinances to end the injustice and to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Joy Fairfield.
Hi, I'm Joy Brooke Fairfield. Like Trinity who spoke before me, I'm also at 2000 North Parkway, 38112. I'm going to be brief. I wanted to share with this body that I personally was stopped by an unmarked car two weeks ago on the way to this particular meeting. I think someone else spoke about my situation then. It was for expired tabs, so I'm a little bit confused about what the police chief was saying and that unmarked cars aren't making stops like this, because that happened to me on the way here. My tabs were expired, that's my error, but did I really need five cop cars suddenly behind me shutting off Adams Avenue and scaring me? It was scary, it was unnecessary, and it was a waste of our city's money. They really could have sent me something in the mail. Research from my own PhD institution, Stanford, studied 100 million traffic stops and found that black and brown motorists are about two times more likely to be stopped than I am, despite me, as a white person, being much more likely to be carrying contraband. That's the science, that's the study. White people are more likely to be carrying guns and drugs. But are they stopped? No, because pretextual stops emerged from the drug war in the 1980s and all the sort of racist language that went along with the drug war. They are still being used to enact war on our citizens through surveillance, through the threat of physical violence, and through the economic injustice that comes from these kinds of stops. Research indicates that the only way to reduce police brutality is to lower the number of incidents between police and black and brown people. So I think maybe you've read this data already, but in Los Angeles, after ordinances like this were passed, traffic stops went down from 21% to 12% for minor violations like this in just six months. So it's a reduce of, reduction of the amount of incidents in which people were brought into contact with the police, and that is all we have found that is going to keep violence from happening to black and brown people at the hands of police, fewer stops. So please support this ordinance and all the other ones that will reduce the amount of stops that we have throughout in our city. We have other things to do with that money, anyway.
Okay, Ms. Hoffberg, you spoke on another item, so in the, I'm going to call for the question on this. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote? Ms. Hoffberg, you can pull, you can pull another car, but we've heard, you can pull Council members, will you please cast your votes if you haven't already? Yeah.
Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, no. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. What number, what number is that? No. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item? Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 26?
Item number 26 is a resolution establishing a parks restoration fund and reallocating and re-appropriating $500,000 from FY23 CIP budget. District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by council members Jones and Carlisle. It was last held on February 21st.
Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Councilman Jones, it is nice to have some levity here in what has maybe been the longest negotiation of my short career. I want to tip my hat to Jim Holt and Ron Coleman and his senior leadership team, Tyree Nichols and Carol Coletta, sorry, Tyree Daniels and his senior, and the senior leadership team from the River Parks Partnership. I've been here since 7:00 this morning, cut me some slack, please. We finally have executed a lease and are going to be hosting the Memphis in May Bill Street Music Festival and World Championship Barbecue Festival in Tom Lee Park this year. So Mr., yes. So Mr. Chairman, before you and colleagues, before you is a amended version of the resolution establishing a park restoration fund and reallocating and re-appropriating $500,000 from the fiscal year CIP. The noteworthy amendments are as follows. The sources will be allocated a one-time allocation of $500,000 from the 5.5 million fiscal year CIP funds that were appropriated for the renovation of Mudd Island. The city will assign up to $350,000 of the fund to be the first dollars used to restore the park. In year one, the damage deposit from the festival operator will be used in year one if damages exceed $350,000. Up to $150,000 of the fund will be used in year one if damages exceed a total of $500,000. In year two, the city will assign up to $350,000 of the balance remaining after year one to be the first dollars used to restore the park. Thereafter, any remaining balance of the fund will be used in the event of the damages exceeding the $250,000 damage deposit from the festival operator. The fund money will be used to restore the park from any festival damage in '23 and '24 only and shall not exceed $500,000. And Jeff Warren moves it, and I'll second it as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. That item has been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilman Carlisle, seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item. Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Chairman, I have a companion resolution as well after this.
Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swerengen and Washington, yes.
Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Councilman Canal, I'm sorry, Councilman Carlisle.
That's fine, we look the same. I forgot one more important thing. The other big, huge, probably biggest thank you is to Shondell Ryan, who spent countless hours negotiating this deal and meeting. She was up early, she was in mediation until late in the hours, was up till midnight trying to get this deal across the finish line, and it would not have happened without her tireless effort. Shondell, thank you so much for all that you do for the city. Mr. Chairman, I move to suspend the rules to add item 39. 39? Yeah, we're doing it.
Yes, 39.
In order to introduce a resolution to allocate and appropriate a $5,000 grant to the Memphis River Parks partnerships to reimburse for expenses related to the festival ground monitors. So if you all, and I'll move that, Mr. Chairman, if there's without objection.
If there's no objection, the rules are suspended in order to take up item number 39. Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, if you'll remember, as we narrowed it on the last few items in order to get a deal across the finish line for the festival to be successful, we, I agreed on your behalf to reimburse the expenses to make sure that the Cubank Bluff and areas around it for ADA access were properly monitored. And so we are going to grant up to $5,000 for any expenses that will be demonstrated by the partnership for that sponsoring. And that's, it's as simple as that. I'll happy to answer any questions. It's coming out of the unassigned fund balance.
Okay. That item has been moved electronically by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 25?
Item number 25 is a resolution to allocate and appropriate $20,000 for supplies and professional services related to Memphis Parks Team Fest 2023. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Memphis Parks.
Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
Okay, that item has been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilman Collette. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the site and for the vote?
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Collette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Swearengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 19?
Thank you. Item number 19 is an ordinance to establish a public safety reporting protocol in regard to disposition by the Memphis Police Department of recommendations by the Civilian Law Enforcement Review Board, better known as CLRB, to the Memphis Police Department regarding CLRB's disposition and disposition of complaints involving police misconduct, the use of deadly force by police officers, and deaths and injuries of persons occurring while in police custody. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5851 is sponsored by council member Smiley, Canale, and Carlisle.
Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met and recommended approval, and I so move.
Okay, that item has been moved and seconded. It was moved by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Swearengen Washington. Going to reverse the order here. And we have council members Warren, Vice Chair Smiley, Carlisle, and Johnson in that order.
Thank you, fellow councilmen, councilwomen. We know in Nashville, there is a law that is getting ready to probably gut anything we try to do tonight. And I think it would be prudent for us to consider holding this or tabling this until we see what that law is. We need Nashville to provide funds for our city and for our police department and for other things that we need. And I don't think that going ahead and passing something that may possibly be overturned makes sense. If they don't pass that, I would like to be the first to bring this back for moving. I've served on CLRB, as have other people on this board, and it's an important function. And one of the things this does is provide subpoena power and things along that line. I would like to be able to do that, but not if Nashville is going to make it irrelevant. So it makes no sense to pass it and stick our thumb in their eye until we know what they're going to vote on. So I'd like to hear what my fellow councilpeople think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. Vice Chair Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've been out on the, we've been on this road of, you know, reform and pushing for justice for Tyree for quite some time. And I think if we bow down to our oppressors, the state, we're doing Tyree an injustice. But I will also say this. At one point in time, this body thought it prudent to decriminalize marijuana, and the state of Tennessee came in and said, no. We thought that was in the best interest of the people of Memphis. At some point, this body thought it was prudent to remove Confederate statues. The state of Tennessee said, it's not a good idea. At some point, this body thought it was a good idea to require law enforcement officers to live within the county, and the state of Tennessee says, no. Every time the city of Memphis decides to speak up for itself, the state of Tennessee says, no. I do not believe we should be worrying about what the state of Tennessee does because most of those folks. Because most of those folks, and I've listened to them, I've traveled across the state, they speak as if the city of Memphis is his stepchild. They talk about our city as if we're only a blip on the map. They say, those folks in Memphis, and for most of them, a lot of times, they have never stepped foot in our great city. I can't be concerned with what they will do. What I can be concerned is what each and every one of us will do. The folks out here who have consistently showed up before Tyree Nichols, have consistently showed up while Tyree Nichols was going through it, have consistently showed up the first reading, the second reading, the third reading. I think we're doing them an injustice. We're telling them that they don't matter. We're telling them that Tyree Nichols don't matter. We have an obligation here today. And it's not about what, whether the state will overturn us, it's about to the people here. It's about to the people who call the city of Memphis home. Our obligation is to pass meaningful reform. And I'm not sure if Reverend Johnson is here.
He just walked in.
He left us.
He just walked in.
He charged us. He charged us last time he was here. He said, I know where they will stand. The question I have for this august council, the question that I have for this esteemed body is, where will each of you stand? So not just this ordinance. I hope we pass every single ordinances on the books because they have put in work, we have put in work. And now, let's not worry about what Bill Lee and the extreme state legislative body will do. Let's worry about our city and our responsibilities. That's all from me. And as you know, I'm voting yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smiley. Councilman Carlisle.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds good, but then there's just the pragmatic actual blocking and tackling of passing law and what it means. And, and I'm a co-sponsor of this, but Dr. Warren is right. It would be one thing, it would be one thing if we weren't in General Assembly, if we weren't aware that the bill is happening, and placating to people with lofty language when in reality, it's, it's not going to help one iota, and we know that. I think that's the thing is, in order to be in an august body, you have to be honest when you agree, disagree, and when you know for a fact that you're putting into law something that gives people either false hope or fear. And the reality is, is that HB 591 or SB 591 is moving through the General Assembly. We pay our lobbyists $110,000 a year to tell us whether it's going to pass or not, and we know that it is going to pass. And it's not directed at Memphis, it's actually directed at Nashville in the Metro Council. We're just a sidebar piece of it because of how they write private and general acts. I certainly respect any member of this body's right to vote and feel however they want. And, and the rhetoric they choose to use, to the, to the point, we're all entitled to the First Amendment. But in reality, this is a meaningless ordinance because the state, in the very near future, days or weeks, is going to moot it. And so to pass it just to get claps is, I think, disingenuous and unfortunate. And I'm with Dr. Warren. If the state fails to move, then I'm happy to bring this off the table and move it. So, I mean, we can keep getting back in the queue and going back and forth, and we can just make our statements and, and vote. I see Councilwoman Johnson in the queue, so I'll yield the floor to her, but after that, I'm gonna move to table this item.
It's not about getting claps, it's about listening to the people.
Point of order, Mr. Point of, Mr. Chairman, I would just add that every citizen here is entitled to their rights, not just because they showed up.
Ms. Carlisle, we recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. My colleague just mentioned our lobbyists. I'm wondering, how did they actually lobby for us in this situation? You know, we paid that type of money. I'm just concerned, how did they actually lobby? Even though they may know they are loose, they should have lobbied, because I think this is the majority, at least it was at one time. Now, my opinion about it is, I have several friends who serve on that board, and they work hard, they're diligent, it's hard work, they have to sit there and listen to situations. It's not easy, they have to make difficult decisions. We have individuals serving on all of these boards. We have to support these individuals. And if this board believes that ordinance to give them more power is what they need, I'm gonna support them, because I think that's exactly what it takes. So I understand we may lose on a state level, but you know, I've lost before in other situations. I can live with it. But I just think out of respect for that board that has been trying for so long, so long, to get some teeth, let's help them. At least let them know we care about them. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Smiley.
If someone is going to kill CLRB, it should not be the Memphis City Council. Retired police officer Kirkwood came right here and told this body what we need to be doing for CLRB. And now we're trying to say, hey, the state may pass a law that, you know, put, put CLRB to bed. But the problem is, there is no law in place right now. Guess who has the ability to put law in place? This body. And I've been talking for a very long time, and I don't want to go on, what I'm gonna tell each individual here is vote your conscience. And if you vote your conscience today and it's contrary to what the people vote, guess what's gonna happen come October 5th, 2024? They're waving at you, because what they're gonna do is they're gonna send you home. You have to vote your conscience here today, and I hope you're conscious on the side of the people. Thank you.
Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Jones. How many members of this body, since this CLRB law at the state legislature is called a state legislator or driven to Nashville? Right.
I'll be up there on the 15th.
I hear you. But that's, but that's my point. That's my point is, we talk about, we make comments like that, but in reality, no one has reached out, and you asked about the lobbyists, who's reached out to our lobbyists to say, work against this? Like, so, so that's my point is, is here we are, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, I'm saying we should table the bill and see what happens over the next two to four weeks in the General Assembly. But if you want to placate, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's fine.
Audience, please, please. Councilman Warren.
I'm good, thanks, Chairman.
Councilman Warren.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we worked hard as a council to pass ordinances to stop the pipeline from going through an African-American community. We did that, and we had three ordinances that we worked on, you know, but we had our attorney who told us, you know, I've got to get you something that's going to go up there and be bulletproof in Nashville. And what happened is, the ones that I worked on, I tabled because it wasn't going to be good enough to make it through Nashville. And the other one that we put up there, they negated it that same year, but they did negate the ordinance that we had from our lawyers. So we still have some protection from pipelines. This is the same sort of situation. I mean, I'm all for this ordinance, but I think all it does, if they pass a law, is we sort of spit in their face and say, we know you're going to do it, so here, eh, is childish. And in my mind, you know, we all can be grownups and think about the long-term situation here. I mean, it feels good to pass it, but you know, doggone, it wasn't like, it's not like removing the statues. We got those gone. Okay, we did it when they weren't in place. This is not going to happen. If the law doesn't pass, I'll be the first one to bring it back, but I'm going to vote against it, because I don't want to spit in the face of people that I'm going to need their help to help our community with. So that's what I'm doing. This is all about long-term. It's, it's not about short-term. It's like, we have to work with Nashville, we need state money coming back, there are Republican legislature up there, we have to figure out how to deal with them without making them hate us. And, you know, we've got enough of that going on. So that's where I'm at. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On top of that, if we do delay a month or six weeks, we have a CLRB ordinance that is already in existence. I think it is best, and this should have been done from the, from the get-go, to amend or add on to whatever changes this body deems should be made to CLRB through the CLRB ordinance that already exists. Redline out things that don't work, blue line in things that do work, and put it in one concise location so CLRB has its marching orders from its ordinance rather than introducing two or three other ordinances that impact their operations. I think that is a smoother way in order to legislate. There's kind of, there's an old gunslinger term that quick is fine, but accurate is final. I think this was a quick attempt in order to address things that the community was voicing, but we should have a more accurate attempt. And I think the unintended consequence, if we do delay today, is that this can come back and we can do it through the CLRB ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Councilwoman Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the words of the other councilpeople. If you know me, you know that I try to work on behalf of the people. I remember Colonel Kirkwood standing right here saying, I need some help. And to our community and for us to say that we're spitting in the faces of the people in Nashville, I don't think that's true. I believe that we should take a vote on this item. I believe that we should support our community, and all our vote says is that this is what we want for our community. We're not saying we hate you, we don't like what you're doing, we're just saying we are representing our community, and this is our voice. It doesn't say that we are disagreeing and falling out with anybody. All it says is that we had our community to come to us. They said to us, this is what they want. This council is responsible to say what our voice is, and we shouldn't be afraid to say what our voice is. And it's good for them to know where we are. And if they decide, whoever they are, that that's not what they want, that's their voice. But this is our voice today, and I- But this is our voice today, and I believe that we should give CLRB some teeth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Robinson. Councilwoman Logan?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that I'm actually on the CLRB board and work with Colonel Kirkwood, Pat Kirkwood, and the other members. It's a very diverse board, and they, everyone on that board takes what they do very seriously, and I take them seriously. And so, you know, I think that we, if the board was set up for the citizens, for the city, for transparency, and to make certain that the citizens of Memphis have a place to go, that they can be heard when they feel that they have been wronged, we should support that. And I understand that there's a, you know, pending legislation on the statewide, but it's not, I don't think it's up to us to monitor and watch that and determine on what we're going to do by what they're going to do. If they do, it so be it, but we are here conducting business for this city. And so, I ask you, I ask my colleagues to really consider those people that have, that give their time, that come out and study the cases, listen to the victims, and who are serving on behalf of all of us. And you know, just to give, if he came here and said, this is what we need, you all put us in place to be on the CLRB board, so please support that. And I just ask my colleagues to really consider the fact that we're here to do the business at the city and local level. I appreciate it. Thank you, you're back.
Thank you. I have four comment cards. The first one is from Yolanda Cooper, who will be followed by Anthony Thompson. Ms. Cooper, please provide your name and address for the record.
My name is Yolanda Cooper, and my address is 4072 Shirley Drive. My zip code is 38109. And thank you, Chairmen, for allowing me to be up here to speak on this important. I've heard a lot of great comments about Colonel James Kirkwood, but I stand in opposition of him being the chairperson of this organization that represents the people. Dr. Warren, Dr., I mean, Ms. Logan, all sit on the board, and I understand that, but the history that is behind Kirkwood needs to be investigated, looked into a little bit more. He's part of the problem of the corruption here in the Memphis Police Department. Judge U.W. Clemmons, which is the first black federal judge of Alabama, and which I call him Granddaddy, came in this city for civil rights and a kidnapping of another police officer that was done right here in this city. What I would like for you to do is to pull his record, since he's a retired 30-year police officer here in this city. My grandfather came in this city a couple years ago to represent someone here, and Kirkwood and a couple more other officers, which he publicly said in an article in Commercial Appeal, yes, Memphis does have a few bad officers, a few bad cops here, and he's one of them. So, the reason that you are lacking the staff and the support that you have, as I recall in the Bible, Jesus had 12, and one was a Judas. So, as I recall that, as you have someone like him, a 30-year police officer, who you would think that would serve the people and would be in support of the people, but the lack thereof speaks volumes while this cannot move forward, until he is removed from the position that he sits in.
Ms. Cooper, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Anthony Thompson?
What the world? Who knows?
Good evening. Anthony Thompson, 39, 44, Otter Drive, 38128. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just turned 69 years old Sunday, and I've been a legal driver for 53 years, and even today, the sight of a patrol car alongside me, on the side of the road, or behind me, does not give me comfort. It's not a welcome sight for me. I have no warrants, my tags are up to date, and I find no comfort there. And the sad thing is that there are many good law enforcement officers. The sadder thing is that the tragic murder of Tyree Nichols is not the anomaly that it should be. You see, most of our contact with law enforcement is going to come in the form of a traffic stop. And anything, this wide array of ordinances that we're looking at this evening, anything that helps to foster the kind of confidence and trust that is necessary in this community for us to feel like citizens and not suspects constantly is very necessary. And yes, we need to pass ordinances that are right for us. This isn't going to make Nashville hate us. Nashville has hated us a long time. So, we need to make decisions based on the best possible outcomes for our community. I simply, before I die, want to be viewed as a citizen and not a suspect.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ms. P. Moses, followed by Ms. Rasul.
I already said my name's Hope, and I say it again, and I'm talking to the council, but since I finally get a chance--
Ms. Moses, just state your name and address for the record.
P. Moses, 2383 Jackson. I'm talking to the council, but now, since I finally get to lay eyes on Ms. C.J. Davis, I hope you'll hear me loud and clear, as well as your commanding staff behind you. Now, the CLRB is a good thing if it has good leadership, but on October of last year, I went through, all the way up into October last year, a two-year process of dealing with them, and there was a complaint that I filed with the Internal Affairs Department that made it to CLRB, and it fell on deaf ears. It was from the same precinct, the Hickory Ridge Station. So, I say that to say, the lady that just left is not just somebody blowing up steam. There's a problem with that precinct, and Ms. Robinson, you know too, because I talked to somebody for an hour the other night, they said they talked to you about it two years ago. So, there's a breakdown and a problem with CLRB and Internal Affairs. Your Internal Affairs Department ain't shit. I'm telling you that now.
Ms. Moses. Ms. Moses. Mr. Y'all, please remove her.
Our next speaker is Ms. Rasul.
Ms. Moses. Ms. Moses.
Lift up the mic. Lift up the mic. There's-- Sorry. Sima Rasul, 19 South Tucker, Memphis 38104. Let me apologize for my reaction earlier. I'm gonna, on the next, on Ordinance 21, I'll explain what happened to me yesterday and as to why I'm feeling and expressing my emotions the way that I am, has to do with police and beating up somebody. But I wasn't planning, I wasn't really going to speak on this one, but I will, because I don't, I don't think CLRB right now, with the fact that it doesn't have any subpoena power, really can't do anything. And on top of that, some of the people that are on CLRB have, like, they're pretty tied closely, or what I call, police apologists, or they have connections with law enforcement. That being said, they're absolutely, oh, the amount of complaints that MPD gets on cases like excessive force, police brutality, whatever it is, is insane. Insane. And it needs to be reported, and it needs not only be reported, but collected, and it needs, all that needs to be done by a completely separate, not Internal Affairs, not CLRB, it needs to be done by a completely separate department, group of people who have no connection with the police and gain no benefit from the police. Right? And C.J. Davis, I want you to stick around until we get to Ordinance 21, because I have something very specific that I need you to hear me about what you said about, they were not trained, officers were not trained to act the way they did. Ma'am, we were trained in Israel, but I'll get, it's a racist apartheid regime that uses anti-terrorist tactics on people Palestinians, so you've trained, and not only you, Rawlings, many directors were trained in Israel, but I'll get into that later on my next one. But I want you to please hear me out, C.J. Davis.
Ms. Rasul?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized. Ms. Cooper, Ms. Cooper, you have, you have spoken.
Thank you, Chair. In spite of what may happen, I still, I would like to be a co-sponsor for this particular ordinance, please.
Councilwoman Logan is not here. Councilwoman Logan? Okay. Seeing no other members in the queue to speaker, to speak on this item, oh, Ms. Nice, would you please add Councilwoman Johnson as a co-sponsor of item number 19? Seeing no other members in the queue to speak on this item, would you please prepare the screen for the vote?
Colvet, no. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Morgan, no. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, no. Chairman Jones, yes.
It does. I'm going to allow, Councilwoman Logan, would you like to cast a vote on this item?
Show Councilwoman Logan as voting yes for item number 18. Councilwoman Smiley? Yes.
So, that was item number 19, and would you please provide the vote tally on that, please?
Mr. Chairman, the votes for that item, Canali abstained. Carlyle, no vote. Colvet, no. Easter Thomas, yes. Board is not deceived. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Morgan, no.
Pass, seven.
Pardon me?
No.
Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, no. Chairman Jones, yes.
So, seven votes?
That's correct.
Okay, that item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 25? 25, yes, ma'am. No, we're skipping over, item number 25, please. Oh, where? Oh, we're, okay. Item number 27, I'm sorry.
Item number 27 is a resolution to transfer and appropriate contract construction funds in the amount of $978,452.50 from FY23 ADA curb ramp cover line, project number PW2330, to curb ramp Route 66, project number PW23301, to construct 450 curb ramps citywide, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by the Public Works Division.
Vice Chair Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see Director Connect is eagerly waiting. The committee made recommend approval, and I so moved.
Okay, has been moved by Vice Chair Smiley, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen Washington. Seeing no members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screens for the vote?
Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes. Johnson, yes. Thank you, and also, Ms. Canali, yes.
Okay, that item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 20?
Item number 20 is an ordinance to establish an independent review process of Memphis Police Department incidents involving the use of excessive, unnecessary, and/or deadly force by police officers, and deaths or serious injuries of persons occurring while in police custody. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5852 is sponsored by council members Smiley, Carlyle, and Logan.
Okay. Councilwoman Logan?
Thank you, Chair. The committee made recommended approval, and I so moved.
That item has been moved by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Swerengen Washington. We don't have any council members to speak on this item, but I have three comment cards. The first one is from Vera Holmes.
Oh, Ms. Holmes?
Followed by Ms. Rasul, followed by Ms. Hoffberg.
My name is Vera Holmes. I live at 151 East Gage. I'm here because it is so important at this point that we get this right. Since I came back to Memphis to help my mother in 2017, I have been targeted by the police department. As of December of 2020, I have a police report here, briefly, which I just found out about this in December. The police officer is dealing with my sister and my mother. It's a family dispute. I love my sister, and I love my brother, but the police officer stated that the officer advised Mary Webb, which is a former police officer, that when she was ready to put other Vera Holmes out of the house to call the police for assistance, let me be clear--
Ms. Holmes.
They have been to the, they have been to the house so many times. I have been to the court. I have been arrested September 25th. I have been arrested September 25th. Every last one of you guys know who I am. I don't need your money. You got my time, you got my talent, and I'm about business. Captain, I'm here to help assist. I'm here to help assist, but when you come into my house with guns and wake me up out of my bed, and you threaten me, and I cannot see my mom ass up today, it's a problem, and I have not tapped into my resources. But we gotta get this right, because I'm not a thug, I'm not a criminal, I'm from Memphis, Tennessee, I graduated from University, from Carver High School, went to University of Memphis, formulated type of basketball player, my husband did 30 years in the military.
Ms. Holmes.
We're about business.
Ms. Holmes, well, I need you to conclude, I need you to conclude your statement.
But what I'm trying to say is, change must be done now. The police, what they are doing, I'm not, what they are doing, I have a list. They have been to the house so many times, they have threatened me, they have called me and threatened me. I have videos. I'm not a thug. Captain, I need your help.
Ms. Ms. Holmes.
I need your help.
Ms. Holmes, thank you for your comments.
All right, I'm gonna try, Seema Rissoul, 19 South Tucker, I'm gonna try to go as fast as I can. Real quick, I said this before, to anyone here that thinks more cops is gonna solve the problem, they don't. No correlation data is proven, more cops is not meaningless crime, so we need to stop funding the cops so much. Number two, what happened to me yesterday, I'm gonna be real quick, I was, didn't mean to go to Walmart, wasn't gonna go, I happened to go to Walmart real quick, went down an aisle where no one normally is, this dude walks down the aisle, whatever, another guy about two seconds later pulls up behind him and says, hey, do you remember me? The other guy says, no, I don't know you, and this guy says, I'm the guy, and you and your cop goon friends jumped and beat up while I was in 201. I understand that Shelby County Department, and I know y'all don't deal with that, but I wanna explain, this is not just a, like, separate or a specific situation or whatever, this is, this is a situation with how we do policing in this country. They are trained in excessive force, they are trained in anti-terrorist tactics, meaning every single one of us here, they think are terrorists. When they go to Israel, she's not the only one that went to Israel, Rawlings, Goodwin, Godwin, whatever, that's how we got real-time crime centers, that's how we got Blue Crush, she got that idea from Israel. Israel has been documented with several human rights violations. They have, it's an apartheid country, they have separate roads for Palestinians, separate hospitals for Palestinians, separate schools for Palestinians, and we live under military occupation. So why are we sending our cops to be trained to treat us the way they treat Palestinians? Under military apartheid racist colonial occupation? That means these cops view us as, as terrorists. We need to take that funding that we spend to do that, we shouldn't even be in Israel, learning military tactics, the IDF, that's a military, that's a military, these ain't military people, they're cops.
Period.
Period. Um, real quick, uh, so, and I'm gonna make sure that the guy at Walmart, we're gonna make sure he's safe, so if y'all, if anyone sends their cop goon friends after this guy, confronted this cop, I got him to stop and not hurt the other, not hurt the cop, I promise you, we're gonna find out if that man gets hurt, and we're gonna, we're gonna hold that cop accountable, we're gonna deal with Sheriff Bonner about that, and just wanna make sure, and I know, I know, I'm almost done. Look up the Deadly Exchange Program, if you don't learn about how we train cops in Israel, it's called the Deadly Exchange Program.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Hi, Beth Hoffberg, 717 South Riverside Drive, 38103. Thank you for passing the ordinances you've passed so far, including the unmarked cars ordinance. What I'm still missing is where we're making sure we only do things with plainclothes officers in traffic stops, or, 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 sorry, no plainclothes officers in traffic stops. There are many people here that were trying to back the blue, and we actually just want the police to wear blue, like, we wanna know that they're police. Also, where did all those people go? Do they just, they don't care about these other ordinances? I'm, I'm just confused why they only cared about that one. Another part of the language, and, and as we're working through these ordinances, I just really wanna make sure that all this work that we're doing is not going to just go to waste when the new, you know, supposedly Tyree Nichols ordinance is going to get probably passed and repeal all of these things, so I'm just urging you that when you're talking about, or looking at this language, that you really consider it intentionally, for example, a reasonable person, so we're assuming, we need, we know we need ordinance 20, because the cops aren't reasonable people. There were 17 people on scene. Were they reasonable people? Also, um, we have talked multiple times about how there was going to be hiring, and Councilman Carlisle, I don't see hiring in any of the ordinances now. You said last time that I was here, that we were gonna have that, it's still not here. Um, I'm also still wondering, where are we getting the disbandment of MGU and OCU? Because if we're doing this review, we would know that there's excessive and unnecessary and deadly force by police officers because of the MCU and the OGU and the other specialized units, so let's get rid of those. And I'll use the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carlisle.
Thank you. Hey, on the hiring, it was easier, because of the caption, it's easier to just bring it as a totally separate ordinance, so it's gonna come as a completely separate ordinance to have our hiring practices on an annual review as well. It was, it was harder to amend based on the caption of the police training bill, so it's just gonna come as a totally separate ordinance. I, 'cause I didn't put it in, 'cause I'm choosing not to put it in there. You have my word that we are going to bring in ordinance that will require them to audit the best practices for recruiting and hiring, okay?
Ms. Hoffberg, Ms. Hoffberg.
We can talk more about it.
Yes.
It's all right, it's fine, I got it.
Seeing no other council members in the queue to speak on this item, Madam Comptroller, will you please prepare the screen for the vote?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Vice Chairman Smiley, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Warren, yes. Chairman Jones, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item 21?
Item number 21 is an ordinance to amend the City of Memphis Code ordinances related to public safety for the City of Memphis law enforcement to collect and regularly report data regarding traffic stops, arrests, use of force, and complaints. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5853 is sponsored by the Memphis City Council.
Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you, Chair. Committee made recommended approval and I so move.
Okay. That item has been moved by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. We have, colleagues, we have 21 cards.
Please, this means so much to us, we all, we've been here, I need to talk to 15, you're like a furious steward, please hear what we have to say, help this process, we get our emotions out, we need to get it out.
Bear with me one second, please.
It's very traumatic, constantly, seeing this happen.
So I'll take it there, well, if you signed up for item number 21 and you are in opposition, will you, is there anybody who signed up in opposition?
They all, that's what I'm asking you to do.
Okay.
Other than my husband, it's like, yo.
Okay, so, with 20 cards, I'm gonna give everybody one minute. Because we, we have other items to speak on, and if you look at the way that the vote has gone tonight, you, so...
Hold on, these are recorded, so what we're saying, other people can go back and watch and maybe learn something from what we have to say, it was important that we get our citizens to get knowledge to get it out, but to also spread that, you know, awareness and education.
Look, I, I, I appreciate that, but we have other items to hear upon, you probably have cards to speak on that item as well. So each, for the 21 cards, I could set, you know, 15 minutes for everybody, and you squeeze it in there, but I'm allowing all 20 cards that I have here to speak for one minute. Because we have other items. First card, LJ.
LJ Abraham, 199 South Park Lane. For me, the reason this is important is because when Tyree was beat to death and murdered, the police made a report and they lied about it, and there was no accountability until the video and everything else started to come out, and we're still waiting on all of that to come out. So, again, we need something to hold the police officers accountable, and again, I've sat in a room and talked to CJ Davis about this exact thing, and got around about answer and response to it, so I think it's important for us to be put in a position to where we can come and speak to it, because we know the police lie, they're liars, they beat people to death, they shoot them, they lie about the circumstances in which they are killed, and we never find out until something like this happens, which is a tragedy. Tyree was the fourth person to get murdered by police since November of 2022, I reiterate that every time I come and stand in front of y'all. We know what happened to Tyree, we don't know what happened in those other three instances, and I think it's important for us to be able to know in real time what the police are doing when they pull people over and murder them.
Ms. Sherman, Amber Sherman. Followed by Carolyn Burr, and then Theron Bond.
My name is Amber Sherman, 6070 North Bell Grove Cove, Memphis, Tennessee. I hope the council recognizes that this is a new day for the City of Memphis. The amount of folks that have continued to show up over and over again, that's not gonna stop, and I hope that y'all recognize that we don't appreciate you censoring our rights to public speech and being able to speak, speak at these meetings, all of a sudden, now y'all ain't got time to sit through us talking, y'all got too many items on the agenda, people dying and y'all making excuses. I don't like that. This is really important that we do have this in place and have some accountability, because as we seen today, Sarah Lynn got up here and lied earlier when she said that they don't use Omar cars and plainclothes officers for traffic enforcement, when the exact staff forces we've actually got to disband have been using Omar cars and wearing plainclothes. On video, it's a beat Tyree Nichols in black hoodies, and they were on video telling him, I hope they stop his A, in a hoodie with no markings on them. So let's make sure that we're also holding the police department, especially our chief, accountable when she gets up here and lies and hires government about...
Ms. Burr.
Carolyn Burr, 2972 Millers Pond Drive. I was only planning to speak once today, so I don't have much to say, except I've got here on my phone Nashville's data dashboard, it's so easy to use, I'm using it on my phone to finance us. Nashville can do it, Memphis can do it.
Thank you, Ms. Burr.
Ooh, respectfully, before I get started, I'd really like my two minutes, this is the only card I have pulled, I have not pulled from a previous item, I have not pulled from this item, but I'm gonna get started. My name is Theron C. Bond, 57 North Summerfield, Memphis, 38104. In this moment and for generations to come, we need to be very careful about the message we send to the outside world about Memphis and the social, emotional impact decisions have on our residents. Memphis could be known for progress, policy, and police reform, but instead Memphis is currently known for barbecue blues and beating Tyree Nichols to death. How much is your courage worth? It doesn't have to be this way, the mayor can show leadership and honor the demands of the people, the police chief can show leadership and honor the demands of the people, this council can show leadership and honor the demands of the people today. We asked for video, we were told to wait, we asked for the names, we were told to wait, we asked for justice, we waited, and the city, our beloved Memphis, is playing in our face with only seven fired, three suspended, two with charges dropped, and one allowed to retire and receive their pension. Those are our tax dollars before being fired. We paid for murderers, that's not something I subscribe to, that's not what I want on my conscience, do you? In the words of the late, great Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., justice too long denied is justice denied. When you are forever fighting a degenerating sense of nobodiness, then you will find it difficult to wait. We cannot wait any longer, we can't wait for Mayor Strickland to become available for the general public because he doesn't want to be. We cannot wait, but...
Ms. Bond, Ms. Bond, Ms. Bond, if you wanna continue speaking. Ms. Bond.
We're doing the right thing when they should be doing...
Ms. Bond.
I urge you to look at your...
Ms. Bond.
Your father, your son, your daughter, your...
I reiterate, one minute, if you wanna speak on another item, please pull another card. Uh, Ms. Winhold.
Parkway, 38112. I wanna talk a little bit about the amount of work it would take to implement this ordinance, because the arguments saying it takes too long, honestly, I don't buy it at all, actually. I have a background in tech, and I know that we can't do this argument, it's too hard. I know the ways that the exclusivity of technical knowledge is leveraged to obscure the facts when in reality, it's often not expensive at all to build a tool that connects the dots and the data, gets things done. And what this is, it's a power play and a tactic that really just signals a lack of political or financial will to get it done, and this claim is especially absurd given how much money we have and continue to pour into mass surveillance technology that's used to target, harass, and control Black and Brown people. And I don't want to live in a militarized police state, and this one time that we're asking for data to be used to provide transparency and accountability, I'm asking you to find the will and find a way to make it happen.
Thank you. Next cards, I have Mr. Josh Adams, followed by Mr. Paul Garner and Chelsea Glass.
Good afternoon, Josh Adams, 1000 South Cooper Street, 38104. What I wanna do is first, before I make my comments, just sort of remind the council that for people who are wondering or worried about state preemption, there is a case, Defenders of Affirmative Action versus Regents of the University of Michigan, which is, which hinders our Hunter doctrine, Hunter, the case of Hunter versus Erickson, and their jurisprudence, what was created was a situation that said that the doctrine provides that if a state action allocates governing, governing power concerning racial issue to a place unique, to place a unique procedural burden on minority interests, then that action embodies and implicitly racial classification, receives heightest, receives heightened juris, judicial scrutiny, and must meet a heavy burden, which means that if you move the procedural burden up, then that means that you are essentially violating the 14th Amendment. So you do have the power, you do have protections, you can make decisions on a local level and be protected by the Supreme Court. Other issues that come up for the Supreme Court is that the Supreme Court has given police departments the jurisdiction, the discretion to lie, the discretion about who to stop, the discretion about whether or not an officer needs to know the law, and under that discretion and thinking about exigent circumstances, whenever there is a situation where your police chief says that we have armed vessels in certain areas, so that's why there's a disparity in police traffic stops, then you have given the police officers the exigent circumstances to treat anybody that's Black as a threat, and therefore you end up with situations such as Darshan Holliday being shot at a gas station when he was boxed in by Omar cars, and you have Tyree Nichols.
Ms. Adams, I need you to conclude, conclude your comments. Thank you, sir.
Paul Garner, 60 North Willard, apartment number one, and I too had, you know, waited, just pulled one card, so I thought I'd get two minutes, but, I know. And I didn't come here this week to cuss y'all, I did last week, but I gotta let y'all know, that was coming out of a place of real intense pain, as we've gone through this yet again in the city, and I'm glad to see the ordinances y'all passed today, but I'm extremely disappointed to see... to see item number 17 removed from the agenda, which really would give this ordinance the guts it needs to be successful. And I hate to remind folks, but going back and I wish I had more time, but in 2015, we worked to pass the CLERB ordinance, right? And at the time, that was delayed because folks came up here and played games, and they delayed it not for two weeks, but they delayed it for four months until after the election. Then in 2017, there was, there was an effort made by my colleague over here to gut the subpoena process that we had established in that ordinance before it had ever been tried. So in the years since then, we've, we established a process whereby the CLERB could hear testimony, evidence, they could issue subpoenas on CLERB's behalf and hear that along with CLERB and bring that into the review process. In 2020, the case of Marcus Walker, there was a request made for a subpoena in his case to hear from officers about an incident that happened to him in 2011, where he and his son and his nephew, where he was beaten in front of them during a routine traffic stop like the ones that we're talking about, right?
Ms. Garner.
Patrice Robinson was supposed to bring that to this body to vote on and never did. So I want to say, I'm glad to see these, these pieces that are being passed tonight, but you have to enforce these ordinances because you had ordinances that you passed before and then shrugged the responsibility of enforcing them. It is this body's duty to enforce it when the mayor's office does not carry out the wishes. So that's all I have to say. Pass this ordinance, pass more ordinances, keep passing ordinances until we have true police.
Chelsea Glass. Ms. Glass. Yeah, I'm sorry. Counselor Lisa Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Members in the audience, number 17, the ordinance about pretextual traffic stops was the ordinance I put forth. I held it, held in it for two weeks. It is not gone. I want to ensure that it is as clear and efficient as possible, especially after the Public Safety Committee and after the passing of item number 31, that it not include pretextual stops in that ordinance. I want to ensure that it gets forth and goes through in the best way possible so that we don't have to go back and say we did that too fast and we didn't do it in the right way. So for anyone that's thinking about that, wondering about that, let me know if you have any questions afterwards. But item number 17, I pulled my ordinance to hold for two weeks.
And as a follow-up to that, whatever shape, form, or fashion that item 17 comes back, I will be supporting. Our next card is from Raven Patrice Jones. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. Ms. Glass.
Chelsea Glass. I scream every time. 1315 Concourse Avenue. Okay. Just a few things about data and transparency. We actually spent years writing this ordinance. This ordinance was in place and up and coming when we came to y'all in December of last year. This is something that we know is needed for Memphis police departments productivity and efficiency and honesty. We have several people in the member, several members in the audience right now that can tell you that their experiences with police have not been honest. They have not been transparent. And I'm actually one of them as well. I've had an officer harass me and I couldn't even file criminal charges because here, we do not hold police accountable. And that is in CJ Davis's Memphis. So another thing that's important to know is that a lot of you have questions about data and traffic stops. Hi, I'm one of four experts. We've been spending three years on this data. The holes and the gaps in the data are not because we don't know the analysis of the work. It's because they don't provide it. So if you want to know, if you want to know about traffic data, there's several people in this room that can tell you more than what you want to know. And I don't care if the state does or does not have a law about racial bias. It's happening because we have the proof. Again, so one of the last things that I would like to say
Ms. Glass, Ms. Glass, I have all of these other cards to hear from. Our next speaker is Raven Jones. Ms. Glass, I've given you more than a minute to speak, ma'am. Ms., grab another card. Ms. Jones.
Raven Patrice Jones. I reside at 5114 Andover Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. Let me make this quick. As a former federal informer, you all do not run your city. SOMAX is pretty much live and well under Operations Legend. We are all up under surveillance. When CJ first got here, I mean, the feds already broke into her home. The, the timing is very unfair because this is my first time here. I don't come out of hiding for nobody. So here's the thing. You need to make sure that when police officers pull us over, you need to make sure that our, that their interactions with us is not at the direction of an FBI agent or a Secret Service agent. Okay? So when it comes down to it, it's either you're gonna run Memphis or the feds are gonna run Memphis. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joyce Stewart, followed by Blue Davis and Ronald Davis.
Joyce Stewart, 1959, Amber Gate Lane. So I just want to start off by saying that the police department and law enforcement needs to be held accountable and they need to have less power over our communities. I also want to remind everyone here and also the group of white flight that left from earlier, that baseless hatred and white supremacy are the mother and father that birthed this nation. But the blood, sweat, and tears of Black people built and cultivated it for free. So if you don't want to talk, I don't even want to talk about crime and safety until we first address poverty and reparations and the closing of this 70% wealth, wealth gap between white and Black people. Okay? The mission of the MPD is to provide safety and a safe environment for the citizens of Memphis while fostering strong community partnerships. That's what they say. But have they done that? Are they doing that? The best way to improve public safety is to improve community trust and confidence. So when law enforcement continues to target Black communities, you are doing the very opposite of that. We have the right to be safe, just like the group of citizens that were in here earlier who came to say their piece and leave because they thought that was enough, because it's always been enough. So passing this Data Transparency Act should be the easiest decision that you make all day. It should be the easiest decision. The way you vote today, the choice, the choices that you make in taking a stand on disrupting and tearing down the status quo of this systemic racism will speak more about your character and who you are than your position you hold on the council. So my last comment, I just wanted to say is by Martin Luther King, freedom is never given voluntarily by the oppressed. It must be taken by the oppressor. It must be taken by the oppressed. And if you don't give it to us, we will take it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Blue Davis.
Blue Davis, 2591 Prince Rupert, 38128. I'm just here to keep it short, simple, and sweet. My comments are mainly for CJ Davis today.
Ms. Davis, direct your comments to the council.
Okay. Well, then I don't want to see any phones or anybody looking down there while I'm speaking to y'all. I'm coming as a Black mother of two Black boys here in Memphis. I'm speaking as a Black daughter of Black parents. I am speaking as a Black sister to a Black brother. I don't want to see this anymore. These should have been passed. This ain't the first time Memphis has seen this here in Memphis. We are tired. Y'all should be tired too. How many Black people we got in these seats right now? We still fighting like this? What are y'all doing? Because we know what we doing, what we want. We need y'all to show us that y'all are with us in these seats. Because we can't be in y'all's seats right now. JB Smiley, I appreciate you. CJ Davis, even though he doesn't want me to comment up here, we need to see better from you. Y'all with the Raleigh.
Our next speaker is Ronald Davis. Ronald Davis. Ronald Davis. Our next speaker is Candy Williams.
14 Lucille Avenue. Last week, I had the privilege of staying with students and professors across the nation, across Memphis, in front of City Hall to ask the city council to do their jobs. There are a number of ordinances that I want to speak about. Unfortunately, one got pushed to next week and one got moved as I was walking up to speak about it. So I'm gonna speak about this one. We need data transparency because we have questions that we can't get answers for. Students have questions that they can't get answers for. They ask the professors and they can't provide the answers because you go on the Memphis Police Department website and it simply is hard to find anything that relates to any of the questions that we have. Our youth and our educators think we have organizations like MICA, Stanford Children, the Justice and Safety Alliance, Decarcerate Memphis, and Official Black Lives Matter, who doesn't work like providing data to you all. And I think you all have a copy of this Driving By Botox summary that provides the data, the type of data that we're looking for. In the summary, you'll find data like the fact that most traffic stops aren't even for public safety issues. They're for financial issues. So honestly, it's a waste of our time. It's not the police that are engaging with these communities, but it's these community members and these community organizations. So I highly suggest that you read these, the summary and read through these ordinances and pass them because we need to require an annual audit of our MPD's training academy. We need to make sure that all these cases are reported to CLERB so that they can file the proper complaints and file the proper subpoenas. We need to make sure that we have independent investigation of our use of force complaints.
Mr. Davis.
And we need to make sure that we require the regular and transparent reporting of data transparency, traffic stops.
Mr. Davis. Thank you. Our next speaker is Candy Williams. Okay. Aleah Stewart.
My name is Naleah Stewart, 616 Adams Avenue. I'm here to speak on behalf of Darius Stewart. That was my first cousin, and he was killed during a traffic stop in 2015. So I'm not finna sit here and act like y'all don't know what's going on because y'all know what's going on. Y'all know what's been going on. Half y'all are Black up here, just as Black as me. So you can't sit here and tell me that you don't know this been going on in Memphis. This been going on in the United States. The first police department in the United States was what? Catching slaves, catching your ancestors, just like they was catching mine. So this is important to me. I'm angry, and I'm gonna live up to that angry Black woman stereotype because I have every reason to be angry. I'm angry that my family went through this. I'm angry that that family went through this. And I'm angry because I know it won't be the last family to go through this. So I'm not finna sit here and plead with you like you don't know what's going on because you want to do the right thing. You would have been did it, but today you have the day to do it.
Thank you. Our next card is from Elijah Kennedy. Elijah Kennedy.
My name is Elijah Kennedy, 2012 Walker Avenue, apartment 3. I'm here to speak in favor of ordinance number 21 to amend the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances relating to the public safety for the city of Memphis law enforcement to collect and regularly report data regarding traffic stops, arrests, use of force, and complaints up for its third and final reading. This ordinance benefits everyone, and I think it's going to be a no-brainer because there are clearly different expectations and experiences in this room. Those are not going to be clarified through allegories and experiences alone. So it's a no-brainer for the people to have access to what the police are doing. I, somebody else up here, Jillian, she mentioned she worked in tech. I also work in tech. And basically, in order to develop products every day, we collect analytics so we know if they're working. How are we supposed to know the police are working if we don't know what they're doing? That's why I would pass this. We're entitled to information about what we pay for, especially in armed force that governs us. And that's the only way we're going to hold them accountable. The only people who do not benefit from passing this are cops who have something to hide. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is Kathy Pullman.
Hello, my name's Katie Pullman, 1350 Concourse Avenue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Katie. I'm Ms. Pullman. Katie, I'm sorry.
I'm here to speak in favor of ordinance 21 and all other ordinances proposed by Decarcerate Memphis. There is a saying in research that we must measure what we value. And so I want to ask all of you, what do you value? Do you value the physical and mental well-being of Black and Brown people in Memphis? Do you value that well-being when they're being pulled over by cops? Do you believe that Black and Brown people deserve to feel safe in this city and valued, even loved? It is also true that we put money towards what we love. Why are we putting more than a third of our city's budget on the police force? I cannot see how anyone thinks that's a good idea. Every other single, every other item in the city budget is in the single digits. So look in the mirror. Do you see the citizens of Memphis as a liability? Do you see Black and Brown children as future liabilities? Or do you see them as assets? If you see them as an asset, and you must if this city's going to survive, then spend our limited resources on affordable housing, transit, education. Memphis leads the nation in child poverty. Memphis does need a change. So stop pouring money into an institution that is only meant to uphold the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trinity Williams. Trinity Williams? Okay, thank you. Richard Massey, followed by Andre Johnson and Brandon Weston.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Richard Massey, 3615 Central Avenue, 38111. The measure of transparency that our community deserves and has been demanding for weeks isn't too costly to implement. It's simply not in the interest of Mayor Strickland to consider more transparency about police misconduct. The community deserves to know why Black Memphians were 2.7 times more likely to be arrested for the same low-level nonviolent crimes as white Memphians. The community deserves to know why more unarmed Memphians were killed per, were killed per arrest than 46% of other American police departments. The community deserves to know why the MPD used more force per arrest than that of 38% of other American police departments. To continue to withhold this information from our community is to continue a grim injustice while Memphis is under the microscope of the rest of the country. There is a reason why the police scorecard database graded the Memphis Police Department at 40% with the police accountability tab coming in at a bleak 14%. Now is the time to implore the same strive for justice and accountability echoed by generations of freedom fighters in the city, in this city, in Memphis, Tennessee. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, Dr. Johnson, followed by Brandon Weston and Paul Klein.
Again, I stand before you to ask you to stand, oh, sorry, sorry. Andre Johnson, 3381 Raleigh Millington Road, 38128. I stand again to ask you to keep on standing and to keep doing what it, what you have been doing. Today is Purim. I was reminded of that a good friend, Megan Keel, reminded us of our Purim today is where our Jewish sisters and brothers and kinfolk read the Book of Esther. And in that book, we read where Mordecai encourages Esther to help, you know, stand firm in the, you know, deliverance of her people. And he said, for such a time as this, you were being called. And I can only imagine what you're going through and who. And I can only imagine what you're going through and how many people are calling you, or how many people are putting pressure on you, but such a time as this, you are being called right now to do what it is that you're called to do, and you know what you are called to do. I am here to encourage you to keep doing what you're called to do, because you know that is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Brendan Weston.
Remember how earlier you said if you were chosen, you were, you signed up on a card to speak on another thing, so you had to pass that one that you were already speaking on and didn't speak? Remember that? You were already speaking on other ordinance.
Yeah, there've been multiple people who've spoken on a number of different items, on multiple items.
Right. I'm a part of, signed up for 2021.
I didn't have it up here. Mr. Brandon Weston, followed by Paul Klein.
Hey, my name's Brandon Weston, and I just have a personal experience. I'm sorry, I'm Brandon Weston, 9124 After Grove, 38018. I have a personal experience with the police. I actually have to go to court tomorrow. I was stopped by the police because they were actually fishing. It's kind of car driver, I drive a maximum, I was doing the speed limit, I was doing everything right, but I got profiled, and I got pulled over to kind of car driver who I was, you know? Unfortunately, my license was suspended, I didn't even know that, you know what I'm saying, I wanna know, but I'm just saying, like, I shouldn't be profiled and still having to go court for three months, all because I'm a black guy and the type gun and the type of car driver. So with that being said, because I could be Tyree Nigga, like, that could've been me, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't even know how to really explain my emotions for that, because I got a three-year-old daughter, and I don't know what I could do if I'm not here for her, you know what I'm saying? So that's all I gotta say about that.
Thank you, Ms. Weston. Mr. Paul Klein.
I don't know what's the next agenda item.
Go ahead, Ms. Klein.
My name is Paul Klein. I live at 1841 Black Bear Circle in Cordova, 38016. Fifty-eight years ago today, March 7th, was Bloody Sunday in Selma, Alabama. Last year, on this day, I was marching across the bridge in Selma with thousands, including our Vice President, in solemn remembrance and yet full of hope, hope that the culture of white supremacy was finally fading from our local, state, and federal governments. Yet here we are today, after Tyree's murder by majority black officers who were so culturally indoctrinated by the white supremacist police state that they could murder a young man for driving while black. And not coincidentally, while our state legislature is over there in Nashville arguing about whether a dashiki is appropriate attire for a black state representative. We, the people, are counting on this elected body to take a stand today against white supremacy in our government. Please pass these ordinances intact and reject attempts to consolidate them. Pass all the amendments that Decarcerate Memphis is asking you for. Now is the moment. And I'll close by quoting Bishop William Barber of the Poor People's Campaign, who said, "Somebody's been hurting our people, and it's gone on far too long." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. That's all the coming cards we have today. Absolutely. Madam Controller, please. Madam Controller, please prepare the screens to vote on item number two. Oh, I did not see you. Oh, Councilor Morgan, sorry, I didn't see you in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, no, I'll try to keep it short. I was gonna ask the opinion of Counselor Wade, as well as Chief Sink. In regards to the information or the opinion from the administration this morning that we received about this ordinance violating the home rule, and if it passes tonight, as it seems certain to do, what would be the administration's response? In order, would it be enacted as read? I know we still have questions about cost, when it can be implemented, and how it would impact operations on the street, and I still would be interested in hearing those from the administration, even if this goes forward today. I know y'all don't have those answers today, but I would like them as soon as you have them. But I would like a response to the home rule from both attorneys. Thank you.
Excuse me, the home rule question, what was it again?
Whether this is a violation of the Charter's home rule, as was alleged in the administration's response this morning, in that it impacts operations and that the City Council does not have purview to dictate the operations of the police department through ordinance like this. I hope I'm stating their argument correctly. Chief Sink can add or to it if she likes.
I think the home rule charter basically says that the council may ask for information from the administration, which is basically what this does. Now, maybe Chief Sink has a different question, or some of her lawyers may have it differently.
Jennifer Sink, Chief Legal Officer. To the extent that ordinance, as is written, seeks to direct officers to conduct their stops in a certain way, collect data in a particular way, submit a particular new form, that's the aspect of the ordinance that, in my opinion, is a volatile of the home rule amendment. I do want to reiterate that, as Chief Davis said this morning, we are, the administration is seeking to work with you on this in terms of the data and providing you with data that is, that is being collected. I can't speak to what the administration will do if this passes tonight. Our desire is to work with you.
Thank you, Chief Sink. You know, and I'm curious as to what the results in this data would tell. I'm really interested to see if we were able to collect this in a manageable fashion, what it would say. I wish we, as a council, knew more about how it would be collected, what the cost again, how it's gonna impact operations during the, you know, routine traffic stop, and what that would mean for the efficiency and use of time of our officers. We, I know we're gonna go forward, and we're gonna vote in the dark a little bit on this one. We don't always have to do that. It seems like that's gonna be the intent. We have, we're still gonna be seeking answers on this. I think this is gonna be part of the budget conversation, as we realize that the cost of this may be into the six or seven figures in order to collect and maintain and present it in an accessible fashion to the public. And so we're gonna have to have an accompanying budgetary. So we're gonna have to have.
Ms. Russell. A month for her. A month. Ms. Russell, grab a card, a month.
Look. So I anticipate there'll be an accompanying.
Excuse me, Mr. Morgan. Any other outbursts like that, I have the authority to prohibit people from coming to this meeting for a certain period of time. So the next outburst like that, that's what that's gonna be met with. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. You can continue.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And I was just wrapping up. I anticipate there'll be an accompanying allocation or a budget amendment in order to, once we discover what this will cost, then allocate and appropriate the funds, and we'll have more discussion about this in the future and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. I think in 2022, I put forth a resolution calling for a data transparency portal. Ooh, yeah, it's been, it's been a minute. It's been a long day. I need some more coffee. But two years ago, well. In 2020, I put forth a resolution calling for a data transparency portal. There was a lot of pushback from the administration, but this body, in a very rare occasion, voted 13-0 so that we can implement a data transparency portal. I believe that's one that you did sponsor, Councilman Morgan. But in addition to that, the administration told us time and a time again that it would be cost prohibitive for us to implement a data transparency portal, and we kept pushing for it, we kept pushing for it, and shortly thereafter, we have a bare-bones version of a data transparency portal. Every time we do something that is contrary to the will of the administration, the very first thing they're gonna tell us, it is cost prohibitive to do it. What I would like to see happen today, and what the people would like to see happen today, us. And, you know, with every ordinance that we've put forth, transparency is something that every single member of this body supports. Make information available to the people. We're acting like the folks who call this place home do not have enough common sense to look at information, determine what's going on, and say, here's the issue. So credit, we have a very informed constituency group. Let's act like it. Let's put this in place and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smiley. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I really cannot understand why someone cannot understand how data could be so valuable to us. Data is by the means we measure everything we do, how we evaluate what we've done in the past. If we had data in regards to how many tickets in a certain zip code, it's a possibility we could find out what are the issues over there, and why is that zip code flooded? Maybe that is a police officer problem over there, or maybe it's just an area that needs some type of economic boost. They cannot afford to get their cars repaired, as well as other people in the neighborhoods. We give money for Memphis Light Gas and Water, we give money for rent. Why can't we come up with a program to give money for paying outstanding tickets? You know, it's a possibility. You know, data can help us, they can help the police force understand how much force or staff they need in particular areas. You know, it could give us a lot of information just by understanding who you're working with, how often you have to interact with people. We're gonna have to learn to use data, as Chair Jones has always said. Dana, we measure by data, and we can go forward with data. It may be costly on the front end to purchase this, but in the long run, I think we'll get enough information that the whole city will benefit from it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilman Morgan.
Very much, and I would agree with a lot of what Councilman Smiley said, and my colleagues have said on this. And it's not for the administration to determine what's cost prohibitive. That's our job. That is absolutely our job. And, you know, credit to Chairman Jones, I think Chairman Jones and I are the ones that have been working on a lot of budgets for a lot of years together, maybe for different reasons, but there's, you know, there's a good example that's in the same vein of everything we're talking about in terms of transparency. And, you know, one of the questions was, why are body cameras ever turned off? Why don't we capture every single minute of data that a body camera can capture and that's available and reported to the public? It's because the expense to do so versus the value what we get, we cost millions upon millions upon millions in terms of data storage, and we have to make a cost-benefit analysis of whether we wanna put that money into other training for police officers. And we have to make a cost benefit analysis of whether we want to put that money into other training for police officers.